If you're tuning into the school board meeting for Monday, March 15th, we are still having some technical difficulties and so we'll be beginning here momentarily, but we are paused for just a moment. Jennifer, I know you were having some technical difficulties. Can you hear and/or see us?
I can see and hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Yep, no problem. It is 6:02 and so I will go ahead and call to order the Monday, March 15th, 2021 regular school board meeting. We'll take roll call starting with Mr. Bryant.
Here.
Ms. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Derrickx?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Tifft?
Here.
And Chair is here. So all school board members are present and we'll go ahead and stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I have asked
Okay. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Say Pam?
Yes.
The recording is going, but the live streaming is not working yet. So would you mind if we paused until the live streaming started?
Yes, absolutely. We'll take, just let me know when it's up and going.
Okay, Lisa's working on it with Charlie, so hopefully it won't be too long. Pam, I do believe we have audio but not video. So it's hard to say if or when we'll get the video component going for the live streaming. I'm confident that we will have it in the recorded session. So tomorrow, you know, everyone could see it, but right now it's just audio live streaming.
All right. I believe that we should proceed since people will still be able to follow along audially and if they would like to see anything visually, that will be available starting tomorrow on our school website. Correct?
Yes, that's the plan.
All right. Are all board members back?
I just wanted to ask a quick clarifying question. Can Lisa present the agenda? Because I can't get the connection. Board book keeps kicking out for me, so I can't read the agenda as we're going along. So could we present it as we go, please?
Are you saying like a list of the agenda topics or the background info for each topic?
Yeah, just kind of, just kind of to keep, to keep the flow because when you reference it, I can't, every time I pull it up, it keeps bouncing out. And I don't know if it's Board Book with my connection or if it's what it is, but I can't keep a steady look on it.
I don't have access either, so it'd be great on my, on my end too.
Yep. So you're thinking about the one-page meeting agenda?
Um, yeah, I suppose to start. And then if there's information that we need that you're referencing or somebody's referencing, we can pull it up, but just kind of keep the flow of the meeting going just to have the agenda kind of available.
Perfect. I'll, I'll go talk to her. She's uploading one document and then I'm sure she'll be able to start that.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I just, I can't, I can't follow along this way.
Nikki and Holly, I just took a picture of it and also sent that to you via text. So let me know if you get that and if that's helpful or not.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if they checked their email. I know I got an email from Lisa with the agenda and all the documents by email today.
So we can try that as well?
Yeah, I don't know. I have to look and see if it was sent to all board members. I know I tried to get a PDF version by mail because I usually can't access it through Board Book, but I did get it today. But, or maybe I didn't. I guess I did email one.
I'm having trouble with all of Google. So I'm lucky I'm on this call right now.
I had trouble logging in today as well. We'll do the best we can.
Yeah, hopefully, can you see the agenda now on your screen?
Yeah, can you make it just a smidge bigger?
Sure.
My old eyes aren't working like they did. Thank you. I looked at it earlier, but I just want to stay connected.
Sure. I also just texted that to you as well. All right. So are all board members back? I'll go through the roll call again just so that we, we all know and we'll start, we'll kind of start over since we're having so many technical difficulties. This is the Monday, March 15th, 2021 regular school board meeting at 6:00 PM. I will take roll call. Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Ms. Buck?
Here. I thought we already did this.
We did. Mr. Derrickx?
Here.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Here.
Ms. Tower?
Here.
Ms. Tifft?
Here.
And Chair is here. So all seven school board members are present this evening. You'd see on your screen that the agenda is posted there. Does anybody have anything that they would like to pull or change? All right, seeing none, then I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Agenda, the motions made by Jennifer, seconded by Jim. Any other discussion? All right, then we will start the vote on the agenda with Mr. Derrickx.
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Tifft?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. The agenda passes 7-0. Next on our list is the recognitions and upcoming events. Oh, nope, the educational plan. I just like to call attention to that. You see that actually on page four of your board book. Those are our goals and objectives, strategic directions of our, our district. And I know that we're working on some revisions to that document, which we will look forward to hopefully soon. Recognizations and upcoming events. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share this evening?
There is a band concert this evening at the high school for both eighth and ninth grade. So that's exciting that they can be back together playing.
Fabulous.
And looking forward to a
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm looking forward to the kids getting, a number of them getting back in school on Monday with the other grades, remaining grades hitting in full time on the fifth. So it's exciting times and I think it's something the kids are looking forward to that are coming back in person.
Think next Monday is going to feel like the first day of school all over again. And Brecken, you put your name in the queue.
Yeah, I'm pretty much just seconding that. There is so much buzz around the school. Kids are so excited that's happening. I'm personally super excited, but besides the point, we currently have Spring Musical is underway. I believe they had auditions virtually, but I'm not entirely sure. But I know that it is being worked on now, although we, although the rumors haven't been floating around what they're doing so far. And then currently we have recognition weeks for each one of the grades. Last week it was seventh and eighth graders where their pods got decorated and, and like they play, they're able to play games and kind of bond as a grade a little bit more. This week it is freshmen and sophomores, I believe. And then next week it'll be juniors and seniors. And that is being put on by SOAR, so huge shout out to SOAR for doing that. And then prom is currently, the prom committee is currently meeting and there is tons of buzz around that. SOAR is helping with that as well, kind of figuring out the logistics. So it's kind of starting to feel like things are kind of picking up, maybe getting into like a little bit of a normal last bit of a school year. So there's honestly a lot of buzz around the school right now and people are getting super excited about that. Other than that, that's kind of all I have.
Thank you. That's a great update. I think we're all a little bit relieved to, to hear that things are getting a little bit back to normal and those are really great things that we can look forward to with the musical and recognition week and prom. I think the date for prom was set for May 22nd. Is that right, Brecken?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
And the plans are to have an outdoor prom with seniors and their date. So I'm sure they are looking forward to that. So yeah, great. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other recognitions or upcoming events? All right, seeing none. The next item up on our agenda is public comment. I have received one public comment and she has asked me to read it in her, on her behalf. It is from Shelley Struce on 2451 Hay Creek Trail. Dear School Board Members, I have a daughter in the Red Wing School System. I've been listening to the school board meetings for a year now. I was saddened to see that school board members did not attend the special meetings that were called over the past, the last few days. I thought the board member's first objective was for the children. By not attending, the meeting had to be canceled and a discussion and/or decision could not follow. Additionally, the board member should be setting an example to students to be respectful, to be good listener, and to fulfill a duty to attend scheduled meetings, just as students should attend school. I believe the public needs a full explanation of what has happened over the last week. We will be waiting for that explanation tonight. Once again, the students are the ones who are suffering. Sincerely, Shelley Struce.
Pam, do you mind if I just give a real brief response? And first of all, I want to apologize for a couple of things on, especially during the discussion before the meeting was supposed to start on Saturday. First, my technology connections were terrible. And, you know, I thought everything was set up. I was on a Wi-Fi, thinking that, no problem, I can see video and audio and everything would be fine. Clearly, it was a struggle for me with the technology and I'm really sorry about that. And it was, it was rough. And I didn't realize how bad it was until I saw the, reviewed the meeting for the first time just a few hours ago. And, you know, the feedback, you know, coming in and out, not hearing people. And so anyway, I'll make sure that I'm sitting here in the office whenever I possibly can because things go a lot better. And then also I want to apologize for being argumentative during, you know, that discussion as well. And, you know, certainly if, if somebody asks Pam a question, for example, that, you know, Pam can answer that. I don't need to jump in, you know, repeatedly to try to answer. And so I am sorry about that. I think all of us, you know, should have really high standards in and out of the boardroom. And, you know, I, I need to lead that effort. And so I'll, I'll definitely focus on that. Kind of also a response to the public comment is, you know, I know the board members and, you know, each one individually, you know, all of us, all of them have passion and skills that represent our district well. And I know we're all committed to, to working on the best behalf of our students and school district and we'll make every effort to be a role model for everyone.
Thank you, Carson. Yeah, I just, I've been asked by a board member and as long as we are on this topic, I've been asked by a board member to make sure that we lay out how all of that worked with the, the posting of the meetings and how the, the, the three days versus the 70 and a half hours. And can you explain all of how that transpired, please?
Sure, I'll, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible and, you know, but, you know, certainly there can be some clarifying questions. The real quick timeline for the decision making, I was asked on Tuesday, March 9th, to take a look at the issue specifically with regard to the girls varsity hockey team. You know, many of them were on quarantine for a full 14 days, which means that they would miss the first game of the playoffs. And I realized that, you know, a game is a game, but this is a really important thing for those girls. And so really, I was just asked just to review it, not to make a change, not to make a decision, not to do anything different, but at least to review it. And that's why I looked at, well, two different focus points. First of all, you know, I contacted the COVID team and Paul Hartman to see if the kids really should be in quarantine. And after looking at the information and learning some, you know, how many people, you know, were on the ice with the girls at a certain time with physical contact, I think it was clear that they should be on quarantine. And so then the, the next issue that came up had to do with, you know, how long should the quarantine be? And so I did quite a bit of research, starting on Tuesday afternoon and into Wednesday. And in the end concluded that the only way that I would consider changing decision as far as the length of the quarantine would be to present something at the board level. I did not feel comfortable just making a decision myself. And, and I'll explain more of that, about that in the return to school plan in terms of timing. And so that happened on Wednesday, which resulted in the need for a special meeting on Saturday because they have to give a three-day notice. And then after it became likely that we would not have a quorum for the, or there were questions raised about the appropriate noticing of that meeting on Saturday. And so then we set up another special meeting for Sunday. And as soon as we realized that, you know, we aren't going to have a quorum, that's when I set up the meeting for Saturday. So it was quick succession of planning those special meetings because of, you know, changing dynamics and wanting to make sure that, that we could have a chance to at least consider a possible change in quarantine. I will say that I'm the one, I am solely the one who wanted to or suggested the special meetings. So, you know, Pam has a couple of daughters on the team. And, you know, Pam asked me to, to review it, but she did not ask me to have special meetings to consider a change in policy. I just thought, you know, if we could do something, you know, for those kids, if it's a simple change in policy and we could still do it safely, then I thought we should make every effort to, to do that. However, I will say that, you know, the action would be true for all students, not just one particular team. So, but that's why, you know, we had a quick succession of a need for special meetings on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And so we got them posted as soon as, as soon as we can. Good.
Holly, have your hand raised?
Um, he, yeah, Carson answered my question. I was gonna just ask him who asked him to review that. And he stated that it was you, Pam. So I got the answer. Thank you.
Yeah, actually I sent a letter on Monday morning to Karsten, Shonda, and Paul. And then when Jim, Karsten, and I met on Tuesday, the three of us had a discussion about it. And then Jim and I left and I had no further discussion with the superintendent after that purposefully because I realized that it could be misconstrued as a conflict of interest. I would have asked, the only thing I asked for was that we, as a board, readdress this issue. Because any team, any kiddo out there, any student that we have, you know, when we talked about this back in February, I was fully on board with keeping 14-day quarantine. I was fully on board because I know it's a daunting task to ask to keep track of who's doing 10, who's doing 14. But as a parent living that policy, four days matters to kids. And when their sport or their activity or the things that kids really love to do, baseball, it's their lifeline. And I felt that as a board, we needed to come together and at least just talk about it and figure it out because I know many girls whose hockey game is their lifeline. And I want to make sure that any kid in our district who has their lifeline taken away, this has been a tough year. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was readdressed. I never asked for a special meeting. I just wanted us to review it. Jim, your name is in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that this normally isn't the time where, or normally is when the Chair and, and or superintendent responds. However, this issue came up all weekend and on certain things and we've receiving phone calls and emails. And I think it's an appropriate time to address some of the things that happened and why they happened. So people have all the information so then they can try to really understand what kind of took place up till tonight. So I'm going to recap, if I may, Madam Chair. My knowledge, the Red Wing Girls Hockey Team played against a hockey team from Mayo on Tuesday, November, March 2nd. On Thursday, March 4th, Red Wing School District received word that a girl, or someone, I should say, on the hockey team at Mayo tested positive for COVID. Thus, our girls were notified and subsequently went into quarantine. I first learned of all of this with Pam and the superintendent on our weekly agenda meetings at 8:30 on Tuesday, March 9th. We discussed the issue about it because as the Chair stated, she had sent a letter on Monday to Superintendent. We talked about the CDC requirements now, about how five days, how things have really changed over time. When we first put this together, when COVID first hit, that the CDC and MDH requirements should be reviewed to see if we're, our policies in line. And thus, we're also, I was told that at that meeting that the Mayo team was back on the ice, even though they had a positive test. Our girls were not. That was news to Superintendent Anderson, who said he'd get it right on it. I expected that something would happen that day as to whether he would address it or how we can address that. So our girls can get tested, can be treated fairly, and be according to the practices of the CDC and Minnesota Department of Health. Thus, some special meeting notices were sent out on, I think it was Thursday, Republican Eagles had noticed to us that we, they did not feel that we had met the legal posting for a special meeting that was set up for Saturday, meaning that we may have, be violating the open meeting law. I take the open meeting law very seriously, as every elected person should. It was on Saturday morning, it was found that we're not, we weren't sure when the posting on the legal posting spot at the school was actually done. The posting online is less than 72 hours. The law states somewhere, there's some clarity or there's some, not clarity, but some information, three days and 72 hours. It's, it's for clarification. I raised that on Saturday thinking, and I was not assured that we, the posting had been done legally. So I left that meeting because I'm not going to be involved in a legal meeting, nor should any member of an elected body should be. I then sent an email over the weekend to find out if things have changed. I could not get certainty that we weren't in violation of the open meeting law for Sunday's meeting. So many people didn't attend because that was called. Monday morning, meeting was called. Late last night, I received word from the superintendent that the attorney stated that he felt, or the attorney, attorney, I don't know if it's or the attorney, attorney, I don't know if it's he, felt that we were within the right of set three days or whatever it is for the special meeting. I asked for certainty, hundred percent certainty, and superintendent said he could not give us, give me that a hundred percent certainty that the postings were by law done correctly. As I stated, violating the open meeting law is serious and I will not break the law. And to be, just to hold a meeting to get some things done, neither should anybody else. We should know for sure when postings are done, and I think in the future, that probably will happen. That clearly falls onto superintendent. It pained me, it really did, over the whole weekend. You can ask my wife how much I lost sleep and all this fact that the kids were suffering because of our inability to meet to get this done in what I feel is was a legal way, a legal manner to do it. So that brings up questions about, you know, why wasn't, why wasn't something done on March fourth, when we received word that a girl, a girl, I'm assuming from the hockey team in Mayo, had tested positive and our girls had to go into quarantine. We could have probably addressed this to a degree on Monday, the eighth. Then the other thing is, I'll be honest, you know, we, we, we had this on the ninth at eight thirty in the morning, at eight fifty, we were done discussing it, nine thirty, we left. Why wasn't something done that day, posted that day? We would have had this thing resolved and done on Saturday. So a lot of questions out there, but I want to make sure that people know that this board should and will, as long as I'm on it, respect the legal notice needed for open meetings. We are, I will not break the law or participate in a open meeting that is not legally posted and legally done the way the law reads. So I'm open to people can call me, they have, they emailed me, they text me. But I want to make sure people know that it pained us, it pained, I think, everybody, including me, not to be able to do this correctly on, over the weekend. So. And email we got today, the game was canceled for the weather, I believe. So hopefully we'll get this, we will get this addressed tonight to see how we can, one way or the other. So thank you for your time. And I'm open to any questions if anybody has anything.
Jim, thank you for explaining that timeline. I think that was really important to lay it out there.
Pam?
Yeah?
You know, and Nikki and Anna are first. But I do want to correct some things that Jim mentioned and definitely give a different perspective. But Nikki and Anna are next.
All right. So go ahead, Nikki.
Carson, why don't you just address Jim's because that way no one's going back and forth then. I, I, I can wait. Anna, do you think you can wait so Carson can address Jim's?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, when you know, we had the, I think there, there was exposure on March fourth, and I believe I did send a notice out to board members shortly thereafter about the girls hockey team. So I do want to let you know that board members, you know, were made aware of that. No one asked me to add anything to the upcoming agenda, you know, after that notice was sent out. Another quick thing I want to emphasize, oh, and then also Pam, Jim and I met on this past Tuesday, not on March ninth. So it would have been on, oh, no, it was March ninth. I'm sorry, Jim. That's the part that I wanted to correct you on and you're, you're right on the date. But I will know, note that it was, that was on Tuesday. And, you know, this was not an easy decision. There had to be a lot of backup review work. I met with the COVID response team, Paul, George. People reached out to the Minnesota Department of Health, the Big Nine superintendents and some other places. We had to review a lot of different documents from the Minnesota Department of Health. At first, we thought that there was one player on the other team that had COVID. And so we were planning to review the game tape to see if really anyone needed to be quarantined. As it turns out, and we found this later, that there were multiple players on the other team and understandably, they could not release the names or the jersey numbers of those players to us. So we spent, you know, a lot of time, you know, planning to do this review of the tape, if we could even do it. And then we found out that it was just impossible because of the, you know, there were multiple players. So after we concluded that, then we really started looking at the quarantine guidelines. All this took time and in the end, it was apparent to me that the only way we could really address this appropriately would be to have a special meeting. So, you know, I, Pam asked me to review it on Tuesday. The very next day, the, the meeting was posted for Saturday. So, yeah, I think it's hard to default me or anyone on the team here as far as timeliness for, for making that review. You know, on that day. You know, the other part has to do with the three day notice. And I did send out an email Saturday morning detailing information. It was really long email with a lot of, you know, information about policies and procedures and those kinds of things. But I think the message was clear that I didn't see any reason we could not hold the meeting. The, the question I think that Jim and maybe some others have is, you know, why did we conclude that Sunday and or why did some people feel that they were not able to meet on Sunday or Monday? And it really comes down to what does a three day notice mean in the statute? Because that's what the statute says. For a special meeting, we need to give a three day notice. Some people interpret that to be seventy-two hours. Our lawyer concluded that it's not a seventy-two hour requirement, it's a three day notice. So the fact that we were planning to have a meeting on Sunday means that we can post that meeting anytime on Thursday. It didn't have to be before two o'clock on Thursday, it can be anytime of the day. Now, there are different opinions about that. And the only, Greg Mattson told me that, you know, he was not able to find any case law that defined what three days means. But he did find an administrative opinion from the Department of Administration that certainly seems to give indirect authority that anytime on Thursday is appropriate. And so the only thing why I cannot guarantee that it would be compliant with state law is that it hasn't been tested in terms of hours, or at least there hasn't been a conclusion based on that. So we have this advisory opinion that I think is very clear. But I don't have case law that specifically addressed it. And so, you know, I, you know, I, I cannot promise that we would be hundred percent compliant because somebody theoretically could challenge the posting. And then it could go, you know, through the court system to determine. And, you know, it would, it potentially could be precedent setting interpretation of the law. So. You know, I will say that I think team members, board members and I are really trying to do what's right for students and staff members, including the girls on the varsity team. And I know that, that I and other staff members made every effort to review the information, to talk to the people we need to, so we could have a plan of action going forward. I know it inconvenience board members. It's really tough and often kind of unfair to expect board members to suddenly give up everything they're doing. And it's further complicated because we were having troubles finding quorums. And so all of a sudden, we have three scheduled special meetings. But I'll tell you what, I think it was important to do because our institution focuses on students. And we need to make it every effort. And I am confident that we did comply with the open meeting law. But I also understand the fact that board members may have questions or concerns. And so I respect the fact, the fact that they may not want to attend, you know, if, if they're not quite sure. But I'm confident in the work that we've done.
Madam Chair, this is Jim. Thank you. First off, I don't appreciate the person who I, one of the seven people that supervised somebody to tell me he wants to correct me in a meeting. There's different ways to handling that. And secondly, I stand by my statement that I read aloud this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before I call on Nikki, Arlen, you had a point of order. Do we need to move something here?
I guess I'm just questioning why we're having this discussion here because our policy says on, on public comment period, only the chair and, and the superintendent will address it at that time. I'm okay with this discussion. I think it's worthy of merit to have it. I have my own comments I want to make. I thought it might be an agenda item on here on the board for tonight. I didn't see it there. I assume we might discuss this later when when we get to discussion about back to school plan or wherever it is, or I was going to bring it up at the end of the meeting to discuss this meeting stuff. But if you want to continue on, I'm okay. I just want to know what you want to do on it. Let me know.
Yeah, thank you. I think it was really important to lay out the timeline of how to address that public comment. Because I think it's important to lay out that timeline. But we can move to the return to school, which is agenda item number four. Where this discussion can continue to take place. And so if you're agreeable to that, as long as the discussion is on the table and we are now on the return to school, this is very appropriate to continue the conversation under that agenda item. So Nikki, you're in the queue and then Anna?
I was very disappointed. I'm very disappointed in how some of the parents and staff think they can talk to us, belittle us, tell us how that we're not doing our jobs. First and foremost, as a child, I've been taught you never ever speak about someone as someone's experience unless you've lived it or you've been in it yourself. You know, I've had problems with the school district, history after history after history after history. So what am I going to do about it now? I'm going to join the school board and change that. I'm going to find out what's going on. So, and I'm going to work with my fellow board members because we each have a beautiful piece in this puzzle that we bring to this. And let us do our jobs. I don't appreciate being told how to do my job, when to do my job. And I don't appreciate being belittled either. I don't do that to anybody else. So therefore I expect a lot more respect than what we as board members have been getting. That's first and foremost. Second, you know, I just I'm going to actually bite my tongue until I hear more from everybody else on about what's going on because I just wanted to speak on that piece about how the emails, the calls, the, the Facebook, you know, it's just, that's no, that's disrespectful. And if you want problem solved, come tell me with your compassionate heart. Come tell me your story. Don't belittle me or my colleagues. So I have to say for right now.
Anna?
Thank you. I would like to see us at some point have a conversation about special meetings and the scheduling of them. I think when meetings are scheduled with disregard for board member availability, all of us weighed in with whether or not we were available for Saturday, Sunday and Monday. And many of us, obviously, because there weren't enough of us there to have a quorum, weighed in and said that we were not going to be available to be there. I take my responsibility as a board member very seriously. But I also, and we get paid, but we get paid thirty-two hundred dollars. That's not enough to live on. I have two other jobs. And so, you know, it's not fair to expect that things can be dropped and rescheduled. Sometimes they can be. But I think, you know, to the public who doesn't see how we have replied with our availability, it looks like I just didn't care enough to show up to a meeting. And that is the furthest from the truth. And, you know, if we want to have diverse perspectives represented on our board, we need to make sure that we're not excluding members based on whether or not they have a flexible work schedule and whether or not they work weekends or first shift or, you know, all of the other obligations that we have. I think, I think I can speak for all of us that we take this very seriously. We are all passionate about our students in Red Wing and making our schools the best that they can be. And I think that every effort needs to be made for all of us to have a voice at the table to be able to be present for meetings. I know that things happen, people, you know, have illnesses or, you know, family emergencies and things come up. But as much as we can possibly make our business happen during our regularly scheduled meetings that all of us can plan for, the more equitable our board will be and the more all seven of our voices will be represented. That's it.
Thank you, Anna. There was definitely some issues with trying to get that scheduled. And so we, we need to do a better job of that. Absolutely. No question about it. There also, while I have the floor, there also is no excuse to not be able to say with certainty seventy-two hours. If there's a question, then we need to take it off the table, seventy-two hours, figure it out, put a timestamp on things that are put up on the board. Let's make sure that this never happens again. We shouldn't be having to, it shouldn't even be a question. So Holly, you're next in the queue.
Thank you. Yes, why was the meeting held when you didn't have confirmation or you, Carson, didn't have confirmation that a quorum could be, could attend? When people did reply, why was the meeting held on Sunday? And then today, when people had responded, that it puts us in a very vulnerable position. I think we're up to about eight emails from people right now chastising us, demeaning us. One was threatening to me and I did call the police. So when we did respond, why did the meeting get held and assume that we should drop whatever our commitment was and show up? So that we looked like we didn't respond. What was the decision behind that?
Yeah, I'd have to look through the, the emails as far as people responding. I don't think we had heard from everyone. I'd have to double check that. So I, I just don't know how to respond because I don't have the information in front of me.
That's disappointing because that's why we're in this position of getting threatening emails, bullying emails, demeaning emails from community members. And you're on many of them, but you're not on all of them, Carson.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know the, the nature of, of any email that was threatening. I'm wondering if there was a, a separate one that was sent out. I'm wondering if there was a separate one that was sent out or, you know, maybe I misread it. I'm just not sure.
The point is, why was the meeting held when we had communicated? Me, I shouldn't say we, I'm assuming because other people said it, but I had communicated. I wasn't able to attend. So if there was clearly not a quorum, what was the decision behind it to hold it?
Yeah, and again, I, I would have to look through the email threads, you know, from Lisa and from myself to recreate that. I know that there were some people who were hoping to attend. So I'd have to look back through all, you know, all the information. Certainly, certainly our goal is to try to get everyone at the table.
Right, if that had been done, we could have avoided a lot of this aggression.
Yeah, I think a lot of things can be done differently, but it's not just me. And I think we need to, you know, hash that out. But, you know, I, and I'm supportive of the efforts of working together. You know, there's no doubt about it. And I said earlier that, you know, I, I have faith in each board member. I know people have passion. They're trying to do good things. And, you know, I, I support you, you know, publicly. And, you know, I hope that, that people give me a fair shake as well. You know, I have perspectives and, you know, certainly work that I'm trying to do on behalf of the district. And that's what I'm going to try to do. By the way, just to kind of, or Holly, did you have, was that your statement or question?
Yes, because we, if we're not the board chair or the superintendent, we can't call a special meeting. So it wasn't within our power to call it or to cancel it. It's the board chair and the superintendent that can call the meeting and hold the meeting. That's why I'm asking why, why it happened.
Yeah, and I think I've answered that.
No, kind of.
Yeah, if I could go back to Pam's question about the 72 hours. We don't, according to our attorney, we do not need 72 hours of advance notice.
Right, this isn't how we need to. Sorry.
Well, and that was, that was Pam's comment, so I'm just responding to that. So that's why I'm, I'm confident that we met the posting standard. And, you know, like I said earlier, you know, I think we have the Department of Administration, you know, opinion on that. But it hasn't been challenged in court. So I'm confident that we met, you know, that standard, the posting standard. But who knows what would happen in court. There are, you know, that's why we have lawyers. That's why we have challenges. That's why we have judges and, you know, decisions, you know, because good people can disagree on interpretation of laws. But I'm confident that we, that we were going to follow the, the posting requirements.
Carson, can I ask, is there a reason not to post after the 70, or sorry, within the 72 hours in the future? I mean, why would we not try to do, give that 72 hour timeline there? Just to make sure.
Right, I'm glad you asked that. There's, my preference, and I, that'll be a stronger focus from our office, is actually try to give a four day notice. Because then you aren't, you know, necessarily, you know, trying to get something up there, you know, 73 hours in advance, you know, for example. It would be much easier if we just did four days' notice for a special meeting. And, and also I know that Jennifer and Lisa have kind of worked out a plan where, you know, Lisa takes pictures when the postings are, are put up and then emails them to our clerk or Jennifer so that everything can be assured. And, you know, my, my goal or our goal would be a four day notice. It's just so much simpler to think of it that way. And then we, we met the requirement for sure. You know, I don't want to put it necessarily in policy because there are so many things that come up. But, you know, I'm confident that we can do a four day notice, you know, nearly all of the time unless there are just really some extenuating circumstances.
I think that's best practice. I think that is a great goal to have so that we don't get in this quagmire again. And can you talk, Carson, about, there was some question about where the postings, the official postings are placed. I think a board member had a question about, she didn't see it, she didn't know where it was, or maybe it was there. And I just want to make sure that we all know where the postings are and what to look for.
Yeah, and the state law requires the posting to be on the principal bulletin board of the district or at the door of the typical meeting place. Well, we often meet in different buildings and different rooms, sometimes at the city. So it makes sense to make sure that the official posting is in the district office bulletin board. Now, I know that when COVID started, there was a legitimate concern raised that, well, all the buildings are closed, you know, because we literally all had to leave. No one could be in the building. And so it would be impossible for someone to see the posting on the district office bulletin board. And so at that time, we agreed, and I don't recall if it was an official motion or not, doesn't matter because we all agreed to it, including me, that we would post on the section by the door 36 doors. So those are the doors that go into Sanju Gym, into the district office area, if you know where that is. And so the, when you're looking at the door area on the, the far left, you know, it's a, it's a window just on the left side of those doors. That's where Lisa posts the meeting notices. So we have it in two places, the principal bulletin board and then also that one area. And so really, anyone can see the ones on the outside. Now, the only concern is that sometimes those papers fly off, you know, they fall down. And so, you know, what I think we'll probably do is put up some sort of piece of paper saying that the principal notice is in the district office. You know, we're also posting here and the notices can be, you know, on the school website. But, you know, because we always post the agendas online. So we end up posting three places, the principal bulletin board and the district office, right by door 36 on that window, and then also, of course, online.
Thank you for that explanation because I think we all really need to work together and hold each other accountable to making sure that the notices are posted in a timely manner, that they're posted where we say they're going to be posted. And also to help each other out because we're also all very busy and stressful people. And if we don't see the posting on there, you know, I know you, you were looking for it, Holly. And, you know, it maybe would have been helpful to just get a call saying, I'm, I'm here at the door and I don't see it. Where is it? I don't know what transpired there, but, you know, I didn't hear about the question of posting until we were trying to meet Saturday morning. So I guess I just, I don't know about that.
How did you know I was looking for it?
Because you said so on Saturday morning. You said that you were at the door on Wednesday night and then you came again on Thursday morning to sign some papers and you didn't see it.
Right, the Thursday morning, yeah. That's what I was, yeah, that's what I was wanting to clarify.
Yeah. So I guess I just, I would just say that, you know, that would be a great way to just give us a call and say, I'm not seeing this. This is a concern instead of waiting until Saturday, then we could have just avoided Saturday altogether.
It wouldn't have mattered because if it wasn't posted.
Then we shouldn't do that.
Paper did try to bring it up to Carson and he ignored it. So, and you, so.
I didn't know.
Wait a second.
Still held on Saturday.
Oh.
The meeting will still hold.
Yeah, because I didn't know that it wasn't properly posted until you told me that on Saturday morning.
Uh, wait a second here. You know, first, I, I don't appreciate, you know, a comment being made that I ignored it. I did anything but ignore the, the question. I did a lot of research as far as the posting requirements, you know, checked, you know, internally here to see if it was posted. I checked videotape to see, you know, that Lisa did go out twice, you know, to that area to, to, to put the postings on, on the exterior doors. And, you know, and certainly from where she was walking, it looked like the, the principal bulletin board as well. I communicated with people who were asking questions about it. I tried to get information, you know, there was another email that was sent that had to do with, you know, there were supposedly photos. And so I tried to find out the source of those photos. And I mean, I, I spent numerous hours researching it to see if it was posted appropriately or not. When it came down to, you know, there were questions about it. And, you know, even though, you know, I'm, you know, I'm confident that things, you know, were posted. You know, I, I didn't have a picture of, you know, the piece of paper that was put up, you know, on the exterior doors of the principal bulletin. I didn't have a picture of it. And so that's why, you know, I couldn't guarantee that it was posted. And that's why the, the meeting on Saturday wasn't held. And I think it was the right decision, by the way. If you're not sure, then it's better not to conduct the meeting for the, the reasons that Jim and Arlen have mentioned.
Thank you. Holly, you were in the queue, but I, I don't want, I'm, we're good there?
No, I, I wanted to comment on something else. When your group met, the agenda committee met on 8:30 on Tuesday morning, we didn't get the follow-up notes about the agenda committee meetings talking points until Thursday morning. So had there been conversation about a special meeting? You know, the notes just say something about student quarantine, but they, no, I'm not asking if you did talk about it or didn't because Jim said it did come up. So if it came up, I would have appreciated in the notes from the agenda committee that that did come up and the topic of, you know, what should we do about this situation? Because it's a topic of concern, but, but none of us were alerted to that. So, you know, when the notes came, I just read them on Thursday morning thinking, oh, OK. But this has turned into a major issue. So had those notes been delivered to us on Tuesday around what was communicated with at the agenda and this topic was broached? You were asked to talk about it by Pam? I think it would have been pertinent for us to know.
Yeah, I, I, you know, on Tuesday, when this issue came up, I had two significant employee issues I was dealing with. I wanted to start this investigation. So I got to be honest, I, you know, getting them out on Thursday or that week I thought was perfectly appropriate. And, you know, as far as the content, you know, I, you know, I take my handwritten notes and then I, I type them up and send them out. And, you know, I, you know, we aren't going to videotape those meetings. I suppose that would be one way to make sure that everything gets out there. But I, I feel perfectly comfortable that I got those meeting notes out on Thursday. I really do.
Nikki?
My question's for Carson. So I'm just going to go back to the, that comment you made about not three days, but you, you would actually like to see four. And I agree with four. Four is, four is more, it's an extra day to be able to rework a schedule. But, and you said that you feel confident that we can, you know, I'll get on board with that and move forward, that you didn't need to move it into policy. But what if something like this comes up again? And we change dates for a particular group? That doesn't really seem fair to me, especially when I've gone through the system and all the generations behind me have gone through it and had favoritism played for certain groups in this school district. So I want to know, why can't we put that into policy then? So that can't be changed? To be fundable for different, for particular people in this town.
Yeah, I do, you know, we could certainly put something in, in policy. But my suggestion would be to, we could certainly say four days. But then have some sort of backup, you know, if that's just not possible, that we would at least follow, you know, state statute of, of the three day notice. But, you know, I looked through the, or Lisa compiled the list of the, you know, special meetings that we've held, I think since November of 2018. And, you know, only four times have we not provided a 72 hour notice. And I know we're only required to give a three day notice, but the other ones, you know, which are about 15 special meetings, you know, had longer than that. Sometimes they're five days, sometimes they're six days. You know, typically with a special meeting, you know, you have a limited number of topics. And so you can get the posting out sooner rather than later. That's typically how it works. So, you know, I'm, I'm confident with that part. I think Nikki and Anna both brought up extremely good point as far as, you know, making sure that all voices are heard. And that means trying to find meeting times that will work for everyone or almost everyone. And that's not always possible as a special meeting, but, you know, we want to make extra effort to, to try to make that happen. And I think that's a point well taken because every single one of the seven voices is, is valued and we need to show it.
Thank you, Carson. Arlen?
Yeah, thank you. I guess this is going to continue to be a discussion, so I guess I'm not going to sit back any longer. First, as far as the official posting location for our meetings, all you need to look is at the rear of our board packet under School Board Meeting Agenda Items, Future Topics and Upcoming Meetings. I'll read it to you. Until further notice, the official posting locations for board and committee meetings will be the district office bulletin board and exterior door 36 at Red Wing High School. During this time, board members are encouraged to share potential topics. I'm sorry, the rest is additional stuff. And, but it's very clear in your board packet tonight and most of the board packets that we've had this year, it clearly states the official posting locations for board and committee meetings will be the district office bulletin board and exterior door 36 at Red Wing High School. Because the wording "and" is in there, I can't interpret this to anything but that must be posted at both locations. And if it's not, one is, if one is lacking, then it wasn't done properly. Written postings are required by law. I applaud Jim for what he said, that he will not attend a meeting that's not legally posted. I will not participate all, either. My method is slightly different. I was going to wait for the meeting to come to order and then ask what was done to post the meeting, but I am fully on board with that. That's why I was at the Sunday and Monday meetings when there is maybe questions, but I don't have them until I get them. I come from a township board in my past before I was on the Red Wing School Board. The statute is clearly states three days. It does not state 72 hours. It was drafted or put in effect back in 1957 and then I think some others wording might have been added later on. But from my township training, and I had a hard time accepting that coming into the school board, three days really means five. They say, hold up your hand. The first day is the day you post the meeting. Second, third, and fourth are the three days. The fifth day is the date of the meeting. That is the standard that's been taught by the Minnesota Association Townships to townships for a long time. School districts have always gone with the three days notice. And I can't say one is right or wrong. The townships are saying be conservative, that you meet the requirements. But three days is the requirement and it does not say anything about time. And nobody's challenged it any further. So I'm OK with the three day on policy and the way we're doing it until somebody tells me different. And the other part as far as board members go is intentionally violate the open meeting law. We got legal counsel from the school district that says this is correct and I will respect that if that's what we have for our meetings. However, six years ago, when I came on the board, I questioned the easily accessible part of our bulletin board for our public notices. I asked that we maybe look at putting them outside where people can view them anytime and build something. And it fell on deaf ears. Nobody wanted to spend the money. I think we need to work very hard to make sure our notices are accessible to the public. And I will push for that again if I just want to follow on it. I was also looking at townships, how they post and then. I was also looking at townships, how they post and it's usually dated and signed on the posting, who put the posting up. At one point I learned about that. There was a suggestion at one point to do an affidavit of posting. I think it would be correct for us to have some document that states that who posted the document. When they posted it, where they posted it. And it should be held separately because notices don't always stay attached to the bulletin board if they're just pinned on or if there were wind can get it. And, but then you still have proof that it was posted properly if somebody signs that sheet of paper. And so I will be pushing for that as we go forward. As far as some comments about some. Some emails to board members. I found one that I was not very comfortable with that I got. I did respond to it on my own. Addressing the fact that I still have a great deal of respect. It more or less pointed towards those that weren't at the meeting on Sunday and Monday and. That I have the utmost respect for my fellow board members. And I feel as inappropriate for them to make that assumption. People have time commitments and that they were all there Saturday had we had that more meeting. I will stand by the rest of you, my fellow board members, and I am totally on board with what you. That you couldn't make it Sunday. I accept that, that you couldn't make it Monday. I accept that. And I also want you to know that I was very concerned had we had that meeting and if it was only four people, that is that the right way to make the decision, but. The meeting was there, so thank you.
Thank you, Arlen. Kirsten?
Yeah, and just, uh, just a reminder that we are posting in both places and we have been since COVID started, so. Principal Bulletin Board and Door Thirty-Six. So just like what Arlen described, uh, in the, the board packet, that's, that's what we've been doing.
And we are also now taking a picture of that, so we have a timestamp of when it was posted and another visual that I will keep track of.
Excellent. Thank you. I think it's really important to have a plan moving forward so this doesn't ever happen again. We've done, I think our community a huge disservice. And I know Kirsten, you said that you feel like, yeah, we did this, the, the, we met the, the posting. So I think that we've all weighed in. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to talk about in regards to the postings? I'm happy to hear we have a plan in place. So now the return to school. What updates do you have for us Superintendent Anderson?
Yeah, and Shonda Jorgensen will join us as well to really talk about quarantine standards. But I'll kick it off and, um, you know, again, as I said earlier, the, the reason that this issue surfaced at the time it did. Was that we had the girls varsity hockey team. That would miss out on the, the first game of the playoffs. And therefore, if we lost, uh, then, you know, we'd have a lot of people who would have had their season ending. You know, without being able to play that game. So the, um. That's what prompted the review, uh, when, when it came up. And prompted, you know, what we're looking for at the special meetings in terms of the timing. But still there's an issue with, uh, whether or not we should stay with the fourteen-day quarantine. Uh, and there's still an issue with the girls hockey team. The game was canceled, uh, or was postponed tonight until tomorrow night. By the way, uh, Paul Hartman did not make that decision. Uh, I did not make that decision. It was the section girls varsity manager who made that decision. And if I remember Paul correctly, uh, that decision was made for all games in the section because of the snowstorm. You know, throughout Southeastern Minnesota. It's not just Winona driving here and Red Wing playing here. It's also officials and, and there was an official coming from Fairbowl and another one coming from Rochester, and I think both of those districts closed. So anyway, I just wanna be crystal clear that we weren't playing behind the scenes. You know, to delay, to, to delay by, you know, one day. But we still have a problem because tomorrow is the girls' last day of quarantine. And so technically, if, if, if I understand this correctly. They would not be able to play until twelve oh one AM on Wednesday if we follow that fourteen-day quarantine standard. So, you know, I, I personally think we need to do something. To, um, make sure that, uh, the girls have a chance to play tomorrow night. Not because athletics is more important than everything else. But I really think, uh, we need to make sure that our policies and practices are serving our kids. And, um. You know, it, it, um, I just think we have to be concerned about that. So, um. I'm gonna go over just a couple of quick things and then I really want Shonda, uh, to, to speak up. And share what the COVID team is thinking, cause it may be different than, than what I'm suggesting. First of all, why in the world is this a school board issue? And, um, and I, I need to respond to that because. I read, uh, the presentation that Shonda gave on January seventh. When we talked about the three different kinds of quarantine standards. As a promise, uh, to the school board and to the community. Uh, our documentation after that, um, has referenced, uh, the fourteen-day quarantine, uh, plan. Um, and so I feel like it was a promise made, uh, at that time. Good, good promise. I mean, I'm not complaining about the promise. It was the right thing to do at the time. Uh, but because there, um, you know, that promise existed. I just do not feel comfortable, uh, making an exception, uh, in this particular case. If it was kind of a, a lower level decision, you know, circumstances have changed, there could be different interpretations, you know, that kinda thing. You know, then I think, uh, an exception might be warranted. But quarantine standards during a pandemic are critically important. And, um, and that's why I felt that we should at least have a discussion at the board level. So that, you know, I'm not just making decisions on the side, you know, that might, uh, appear to be different than the January seventh meeting. So I wanna be clear about that. Uh, Paul did survey the other big nine schools. About half of them have. Uh, a fourteen-day standard. The other half have a seven-day standard, so kids could go back, uh, after seven days if they have a negative PCR, uh, test. The, um, you know, I think we should consider, uh, changes. Because circumstances have changed significantly, uh, since the January seventh, uh, meeting. You know, obviously student safety is, is always gonna be our top priority, but we have to address other needs of students. Who desire to return to school and participate in activities. On Saturday, I was down at the depot, um, for a student presentation, a student art presentation. Which is really well done, by the way. So go to the depot and take a look at what our students are creating. And I spoke with, um, you know, one of the artist, student artists there. Who was so excited about being part of this, the Spring Musical. And, you know, I'm sitting there thinking, wow. You know, if, if we have a, a ten-day policy that would require a test to come back. Or a fourteen-day policy that does not require a test. I think it would be a shame if this student who is so excited, engaged with Spring Musical. Isn't able to do it because of that four-day difference. Uh, and so I think it's even more important. Uh, it's not just for girls hockey or for sports, it's for activities, it's for school. As far as considering, uh, a change in the standard. I will say though, that the COVID, uh, response team. You know, is concerned about implementing, uh, such a change. You know, they wanna make sure it's done well and they wanna make sure that, uh, we really consider. You know, the timing of making that decision and. You know, throughout this process, I've encouraged our presenters to share their thoughts. And they might be different than mine and that's good. We need to hear different perspectives because, you know, this is a, this is a big decision. You know, Shonda can, can mention this herself, but I think the COVID response teams. Recommendation would be to continue, uh, to use the fourteen-day quarantine standard. Until March or until April fifth or perhaps April nineteenth. When the board would review, uh, what we're thinking. My recommendation is to move or to allow the ten-day quarantine standard for students. If they produce a negative PCR test result, uh, taken in days. You know, five through ten, uh, and follow other, uh, Minnesota Department of Health restrictions. Uh, and then my suggestion is to allow either me or the COVID response team some flexibility. So that we can make adjustments in our planning, uh, for the rest of the school year. So that we don't have to go back every time to the school board, uh, to discuss this. So again, it, I don't want, it's not a competing thing between the COVID response team and, and Kirsten, so. Please don't take it like that. Um, I think there are valid concerns that, that we wanna discuss tonight so that we can move together forward. And so that we can support each other, uh, as decisions are made. Pam, would you be okay if, if Shonda took the floor?
Well, I see Nikki's in the queue and then Holly, can they both address their questions first?
Sure.
I would actually like to wait to address mine after hearing what the, um, COVID response team has said.
Okay, Holly?
Um, I would like to respectfully request according to policy two-ten. That you recuse yourself from the vote, Madam Chair? For conflict of interest?
I understand that, but I think that this policy, while yes, it immediately affects my two daughters. This policy change affects every single student in our district whom I am here to represent as well. And so I will, I will. I will consider that. But, um, you know, like, I think you need to, I mean, we need to think about. Like I said earlier. I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Um, just like I said earlier, and I'll just piggyback on what Kirsten said, those four days really matter to kids. It's their lifeline and we're not, I, I don't think I heard Kirsten say anything about where that recommendation is coming from, but it's actually in our board packet. This isn't a recommendation that he just pulled out of the air. It is the clarification of sports by the Minnesota Department of Health. And I think Shonda can probably speak more to that, so I'll just, I'll just let you, uh.
Every decision we make is for the best interest of all of the students. And if there's a personal connection or a gain, we are asked to, um, come forward. That's what the policy states. That we recuse ourselves from a vote and I know Arlen and Jim have done that in situations.
Consider that, yeah.
Okay, so I just wanna say, I know that we're all thinking in the best interest of kids.
Go ahead, Shonda.
Okay, hi guys. So as a representative of the COVID, representative of the COVID team. We make all of these decisions together. It's not just one person that decides who does what, when. And we consult MBE and MBH, the county, anyone to get guidance on how to handle situations. And at the beginning of this year, uh, we had a meeting with Minnesota Department of Education, Health. And the county was there as well and they all highly encouraged us not to short quarantine students. And so at that time we decided not to and it's been working so far. We haven't received really any rejections unfortunately, you know, until this hockey, uh, situation came up. Totally understandable, um, but we did it based on the information that we got from Minnesota Department of Health. Who we talked to at Mayo and just, we went back and forth. And thought it was appropriate to quarantine the girls and at that time. Our, um, standard was to only do a fourteen-day quarantine for students that we weren't. Gonna short quarantine them and that's just how we, how, how we've been going along. So the COVID response team isn't against doing a shortened quarantine for students. But we wanted to just remind you that there are a couple of things coming up that might. Cause our situation to get worse. Because we're bringing all students back, we are losing the mitigation strategy of six feet. So automatically we're putting our students at risk by just doing that. And if we were to bring, and then if we do another risk, if we, you know, add the quarantine in, that's just another risk that we're adding to the students. So just visualize the first student, um, student A has COVID. Now the eight people around them, um, will be a close contact. If we short quarantine them, they still have four days that they could potentially develop symptoms and be infectious. And so now we have the A in the middle, the B on the outside, and then all the kids around that are close to the close contacts. Could potentially be infected with COVID. And so because we're, we're getting rid of the six-foot strategy. Adding the shortened quarantine at this moment really doesn't make sense to us. We kinda wanna see what happens to our numbers when we get everyone back. You know, are quarantine rate, rates going up? Are positivity rates going up? Just to gauge, to see how getting rid of that risk is gonna impact the safety of the school. We are currently working on vaccinating all the teachers or all the, all staff in the building. Most, uh, I, I won't say most, all employees have been offered the chance to get their vaccine. We've also offered it to subs, um, bus drivers, you know. Coaches, any active casual people that are currently working with students at the moment, we've offered it. And we're, we're, we're well on our way to getting people vaccinated. We have that big week, uh, next week, I guess, um, where we're sending two hundred and eighteen people to get their second vaccine. And so two weeks after that, they will be fully protected and will not have to, have to quarantine if they're a close contact. So why don't we wait a few weeks to get everybody vaccinated and to be protected so that when we do. Get rid of the six-foot distance risk and then now we're short quarantining people, we have an added benefit or we have a, a, something to help protect our staff. And I don't know if any of you know, but there's a currently an outbreak of the B one seventeen COVID variant here, uh, in Carver County. And it was linked directly to school, uh, youth sports, particularly hockey. And it's being urged by the Minnesota Department of Health that we. Look at our mitigation strategies and possibly increase them. And so this is kind of going against, you know, going against that recommendation because. Now we're taking away six feet, now we're taking away four days of quarantine and so that just might up our risk. And also we need time to train people, to teach people how to do, uh, short quarantine, who qualifies for short quarantine. And so we need that time to train the building COVID teams, um, so that they do it properly. They're the ones that work with the students. Every day and they're quarantining people every day and so they need to understand how this new quarantine works and how. How it's gonna be implemented. So, you know, as of right now, I, you know, we recommend the fourteen-day. And I think if we can get through those two things. You know, and talk about it as we go, see where our numbers are at, see if it's appropriate. And then, you know, pick an inflammation day, date, but I, you know, we also kinda need to think about if things get really bad. Are we gonna take away that option to, to short quarantine? So it might flip-flop a couple of different times, we don't know. So that's where we stand. Um, our job is to keep everyone in the district safe. And we're trying to do the best we can, um, at that. And just FYI, um, we've, so far this school year, we've had one possible school spread of COVID. And that's really hard to say for a lot of districts and it's because of all the safety measures that we've put in place. And we realize the fourteen-day court, uh, quarantine is a hardship for everyone. We're quarantining, you know, first graders whose, whose mom, you know, has to take off work to do it. May not be able to afford to, but they did it because they know that's the safest for our community. So, and I realize that there's a lot of mental health involved in here and it, these are not easy decisions and we do not enjoy making them. You know, I, I, I've, I've gotten yelled at once before and many, many times, so. But it's, it's what our policy is and, and we try to explain that we're doing it to keep everyone safe. So that's what I have to say. Any questions?
Anna's in the queue.
I was first, actually. I, thank you, Shonda. For everything that you've done for our district, our kids, our staff, our parents. Thank you and, um. It's probably, it's probably not an easy job that you do. And I just wanna say that I appreciate you. Thank you very much. So, I'm just. You know, I've gotten all my information and stuff and everything. What I keep hearing is that. The kids disappointment, the kids disappointment, the kids disappointment. This is life. And we, we all got hit with life really, really, really hard in twenty twenty. You know, we need to come together as a community to help. Get through this pandemic. But bullying other people because you're not. But bullying other people because you're not getting your way, that is not how the world works. It's not. You know, we have to come together and do right by all children. So what Shonda was saying, if we lifted this, that puts my kids, which are American Indian, which we have a higher COVID rate of like bad things. So that puts my kids at risk then. So when you say sit there and say, we're doing it for the district, well, no, you're not. You're doing it because some kids are disappointed that they won't get to play in a hockey tournament. So that puts the rest of the staff and all the other children at risk. So that's just what I had to say.
Uh, Holly, you're next in the queue. Do you, after Nikki, was there something more you wanted to share or add?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you. Anna?
Oh, I was just gonna say, yes, thank you, Shonda, very, very much for that report.
Okay, um, yeah, so first of all, I just want to thank you to Shonda. And I want to say that I have deep empathy for the girls' hockey team and especially those seniors who might never play a hockey game again in their high school career. That is heartbreaking, and I I understand that because I had a kid who was a senior last year, and her last year was heartbreaking. So there's nobody, I don't know anybody who has gone through the last year without horrible things. Um, so I truly, sorry, I truly feel for all of those girls. But I also want to make sure that we're making the right choices for all of the kids. Um, and, you know, not just looking at what a certain group wants, but what's truly best. Um, so Shonda, this is this is the question portion of um my statement. Um, so my understanding, and I hope you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, my understanding with the shortened quarantine is that it's really only appropriate for um being able to stay still six feet apart. So that it might be something if um it's a teacher in a a classroom who isn't in direct physical contact with their students, that that teacher might be able to short quarantine, or potentially if it was a sport like, I'm thinking, you know, like a a single figure skater on the ice isn't in six feet of contact with another person. Um, but I love hockey. I've watched hockey my whole life. And uh my favorite parts is are checking, and you're not six feet apart then. So I'm wondering if you can, I, you know, from what I'm reading on the MDH website, that six feet is really a a critical piece of this shortened quarantine. So I'm wondering if, am I missing something? Is there any other information, or is that still our current guidance?
That's still the current guidance. In fact, um, we talked to the county today, and she said, you can't short quarantine if you can't stay six feet from everyone else. So the idea is you short quarantine, so the seven or ten day. Um, the rest of the time, you need to stay six feet away from everyone, wear a mask, wash your hands for the next however, however many days it takes to get to fourteen. So if you do like a short seven day quarantine, you have to be able to stay six feet from everyone else. Well, unfortunately, with all the kids coming back in, that's not something we're going to be able to accomplish. It's just going to be impossible. Um, and there was a guidance that came out, and I'll think this is what Pam's referring to. Um, came out on two nineteen, um, talking about sports quarantine clarifications. It says our general quarantine guidance states that individuals may resume normal activities after stopping quarantine. However, individuals, whether in school or sports activities, who meet the criteria criteria for a shortened quarantine are still recommended to maintain social distancing six feet through day fourteen, even if they are released from quarantine prior to that. For sports activity activities that involve close contact and for many in-person learning activities as well, maintaining a six foot social distancing is challenging. Because schools are able to choose a shortened quarantine and resume normal activities, even if students are unable to maintain social distancing through day fourteen, sports activities may also be allowed to do this. Now, this is an important sentence. This option carries additional risk of trans transmission, and it is important that school and sports administrators understand that they are choosing to assume this risk. So in this particular document, they're saying you should be six feet away, but we'll allow you to be closer as long as you're willing to assume the risk. And that goes back to if we short quarantined uh one of our teams, and they were out for ten days, and they went to a game for the in in those next four days, and one of those students became positive with COVID. Well, now we've just infected another team. And they're going to have to be, they're going to be out, they're going to be quarantined, whatever their particular policy is. And so it it can really easily get out of control, and that's why it was recommended that we don't short quarantine, not specifically that instance, but because there are so many variables in it, we have to have a PCR negative test to get out of quarantine. Uh, rapid tests are not PCR, um, they take twelve hours, so we had it has to be verified. Um, you know, there's a lot of pieces that we have to go through to be able to accomplish this correctly. Um, and so even though Minnesota Department of Health is saying you you should you should be six feet from people after you short quarantine, they're now saying, you know, we'll allow you to be less than six feet, but you need to understand the risk that you're that you're um taking.
And Shonda, with that six feet, is that six feet for fifteen minutes, like what we've been following the whole time?
Well, and that was something that we've always been following that because that's in most of our situations. That's been appro an appropriate way to figure out who needs to quarantine or not. Um, and then with this situation with the hockey players, um, it was a someone on another team. Um, and, you know, there was argument that they weren't within six feet of of this person for more than fifteen minutes. Well, yes, that's true, but another reason for who has to quarantine is people who had direct physical or intimate contact, kissing, hugging, or other types of physical contact with a person who is sick with COVID nineteen. So based on that and our discussion with a sports guy with Minnesota Department of Health, he felt our decision was appropriate. Um, so if you think about in it, you know, when you're sitting in a classroom, you're, you know, your your uh blood pressure's even, you're not breathing hard. Uh, but when you're at a game, you're working, you're sliding, you're hitting people, you're breathing harder. And so that just adds to the risk of it. Um, and so um that's why we made the decision that way. And so under that, people who had direct in physical or intimate contact should be quarantined. Uh, now, we we had some parameters to work with, and, you know, we worked with them the best we could, but at the end, you know, that's how that whole rolled out. So it's not, you know, it wasn't a split decision. And it's not the first team that we've quarantined for fourteen days. Um, there's probably five different teams that we've had to work with to see if we have to quarantine them and not. And luckily, we've been, it's only two. Um, I was worried last fall came and we almost quarantined football. And I was like, oh, no, this is going to go over real well. So, you know, we're able to work through a lot of this. Um, so, but but if we do the ten day quarantine, now, not everyone's going to qualify. Um, if there is a person, if if there is a household member that is positive, that you live with someone who has COVID, they cannot short quarantine, they have to do the four full fourteen days. Um, and it's uh some of it is if you um live with someone, if you work in a high-risk area, if you're taking care of someone with COVID. So there's going to be instances where you you just can't, you're not qualified. Um, and then if they do short quarantine, they have to follow certain guidelines. Um, so, you know, we could, we could eventually, you know, get to that point. I just think we've got a lot of things that we need to get through first before it's really going to be the safest way to go.
And I think I I respect all of the work that the COVID team has done. Shonda, I know your job has got to be astronomically impossible to do, which is why I supported the fourteen day quarantine. Um, and I know that's hard. It's hard to keep track of fourteen days versus ten days. I totally get that. Um, but I also think our district really needs, we owe it to our kids to do everything we can to um stay engaged, to um find their lifeline, to be in um activities, um, to come to school if they can. I mean, we've worked so hard to get our kids back to school. Four days of instruction is huge, and we're not saying willy-nilly, you know, oh, you know. I mean, there are very strict parameters around how kids can come back. Um, if the athlete was wearing a mask at the time of exposure, every single one of our girls was wearing a mask and some in a bubble with a splash guard. Um, and if they haven't had symptoms during the quarantine period, and they've had a negative COVID test. Um, so I just feel like we need to to give some uh flexibility, and it's not just for the hockey kids. Again, I will say that, you know, what about the kindergartner who loves the last day of school with their teacher, the picnic? And we're talking matters of hours now with this hockey team. It's thirteen hours, you're thirteen days and nineteen hours. They're five, they're five hours short now to be able to play tomorrow night, five hours. And and I get it, I get it. I don't want you to change a policy just for the hockey team, but I want us to think about every single kid in our district. There are so many scenarios that we can't even wrap our heads around right now that might come up. And and I think we owe it to every single kid in our district to be somewhat flexible and to be open to listening to individual cases. And if your case says, no, I I'm uncomfortable, short quarantine you, I will respect that wholeheartedly. But what about a kid who's been quarantined for thirteen days and nineteen hours? Are they, you know, I mean, I I I I feel like we're doing a disservice to our kids to to have a a hard and fast rule about that.
Um, I can I, just Pam, quick, I just want to clarify how we count days. And it was kind of, it's very similar how you count days for the school board. So we don't count by minutes, we count by days. So they were in contact with someone on the second, and so quarantine is done on the seventeenth. It's not, we don't uh look at the time it happened. Um, it's by the day, and that's that's been repeated many times from Minnesota Department of Health because that comes up a lot. How do we count? When do we start? When does it end? Um, and so we do just the 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 day, and so that's why we're here where we're at, so.
Right, and again, yeah, Jim, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Shonda.
Hi.
I'm uh, I'm someone that who loves band, choir, hockey, sports, orchestra, all the activities that people participate in. So I'm looking at it as a, as a whole. Uh, I think our job, our responsibility as a board is to look at things, um, policies, decisions. If we have more information that comes forward, that they look at changing our decision, changing our policy, we have the obligation to consider it. I believe it was made comment somewhere along here in January, this policy was brought forward. Um, it's now February nineteenth, I believe, MDH came out with some uh modifications on a policy. Um, I'm going to use sports, for instance. Doesn't say hockey, doesn't say anything, just says sports. If you have a mask, um, and you were in contact with somebody and tested negative, you may go to a lesser time of, I don't, you have the date, seven days, ten days, whatever it might be. You know what it is, Sandra.
I do.
And uh, but so we as a board should be looking at things, no matter what the decision, what the issue is, to look at to see if we have better information to make an appropriate decision. And everything that's said tonight, I get it, I understand it. Um, I know people my near dear to me that had COVID. And uh they did all the precautions they could do, but, you know, they get it, they have, they they did their quarantine, they did all that. Uh, but I know people that, you know, were near somebody that had the mask on, didn't have didn't have enough contact with them, tested negative, and then they came back to work or did something. So um, let's let's just use the girls' hockey team, for instance. And Anna, Anna, um, don't take this wrong, but I didn't even think you're old enough to have a senior graduating, so. Um, but uh, and and you're like my wife. My wife loves hockey, loves it, diehard, uh, more on the professional end. Um, but these, whatever they are, high school, college, they're up and down the ice. They're digging a puck. Girls can't check, but they get close contact. I get that. But, you know, maybe fifteen minutes by somebody with, these girls have a mask, their underparts, their vents are close plugged up or closed, whatever, it's got to be very difficult to breathe and much less skate for whoever it is with this precautions on them, and I believe in the precautions. Um, so I guess, you know, that's my point. Um, you know, we can't, we can do everything we can to protect, try to protect students in our building, but we know not one of us here tonight can say what happened last weekend with children that are coming to our school on the twenty second, where they were, who they're with, how close they were, what they do. Um, so we're we're doing what we can here, and when the chain, when the policy or the direction by the MDH is presents the information for us to uh to look at, you know, we 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 owe it to everybody to at least consider it, to look at it, to see if it fits into what we want to do going forward, so. Um, I'm a, I think it's a, uh, if kids met, you know, it's five to seven days, they test negative, um, we should certainly consider lessening the uh um fourteen days that we certainly um have we have in place for those that have tested negative, had been masked, and uh doing everything they can to prevent it, and uh, uh, that's my saying. I'll let others speak. Thank you.
Well, I'll I'll just make a comment. We're not against talking about the short quarantining. Can we do it? When is it appropriate? Um, it's just at, you know, if it's a decided to be made tonight, we don't have our policies and procedures in place, we don't have people trained. Um, and it's going to be a a huge learning curve for everyone. And then we're just worried about what's going to happen when everyone comes back. Um, that's a whole new realm that we haven't navigated before. So, you know, we're we're willing to talk about it, and let's nail this, let's get it right, um, and go from there, so.
Arlen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I have a question, maybe Shonda can answer. How dangerous can people be at day thirteen, at day fourteen, and at day fifteen versus ten days?
I that can't answer because I don't know if anyone really knows. Um, but they do know that you can show symptoms up to fourteen days after close contact. So, and that's that hasn't changed, that's been the same way. I don't know if they've done study on saying you're more infectious on day five than you are on day thirteen. Um, but it's been said you could potentially develop it for up to fourteen days. Now, on average, it's five to seven, and so that's why this shortened quarantine came out. Uh, but there are instances where it has been day thirteen and fourteen. So they've kept that as pretty standard across the board.
Have there been just instances of day fifteen?
Not that I've heard, uh, but there there very well could be.
Okay, I think I got the answers I need. Um, this has pulled at me quite a bit since this first came up, what is the right thing to do? Um, far as I'm concerned, the day fourteen is somewhat arbitrary. Somebody had to pull a number out of the hat for COVID quarantine and using science behind it to come up with something. They didn't put out day thirteen, they didn't put out day fifteen, they didn't put out day ten. But, you know, fourteen days is two weeks, that is an easy number, and I don't know who was behind picking out fourteen days, I really don't. But we are so close to that time, what is the potential risk of exposure? Well, first, we have an obligation to protect the students in our school. And I assume if we lift the quarantine tomorrow, those students that are in the right cohort would have to be in school tomorrow. So we have a minimal amount of risk of, if, I don't know how many athletes we're talking about, if it's ten, and you do the court, on average, it'd be five people would be in school tomorrow at day thirteen rather than day fourteen. What, I don't know how much risk that is to the students and staff in our school. Uh, some of those may be online only also, I don't know that, uh, but but there is some potential exposure, and how much is that risk? How much risk is it if we met that criteria five hours later, as Pam has said? Um, I'm sure normally when that day fourteen comes, we're not going right down to the minute by five hours, but I'm I'm looking at it roughly half a day. And I don't have the information in front of me to make I don't have the information in front of me to make that decision because of HIPAA laws and different things, who's been exposed, how were they exposed, what was the result of their test or anything else? In the end, I don't think that's a decision that the board can actually make in each instance, and I don't think we should, would want to be. But I am very supportive of, in this situation, shortening the quarantine so that they can play tomorrow because I think we're only dealing with a lesson a day. But I don't want to make an exception only for hockey. So we have to use science and how that decision can be made to somebody else. Um, I am supportive of having uh, a shortened quarantine. I'll just say appeal to the superintendent for a variance if they don't get it from the COVID team. And let the superintendent make that decision based on the facts that the superintendent can get. Um, I do also, I know we had three recommended options. Um, just one second here. One was uh, leave the fourteen day as it is. The second is move to a ten day quarantine standard for students effective immediately. If students produce a negative PCR test result taken in days eight through ten, I don't know who's gonna have that and who's gonna be presented to. And the third one is I moved to refer the issue to about quarantine standards to the superintendent. And I guess my feeling is that we should go that direction. And uh, I'm using the assumption that the superintendent, if he does decide to shorten a quarantine, would would use those uh PCR test results in consideration if he's making a decision. Uh, also, I just want to state there's a question about whether Pam should vote on this issue or not. And that's something her heart has to decide. Personally, I don't think it's uh, most of the conflict of interest situations tend to be monetary. I I'm not trying, I have to read through this for sure, but um, I'll let Pam make that decision as far as I'm concerned on whether she should vote on this or not. So thank you for hearing me out.
Carson's next in the queue.
Yeah, I just have uh three uh quick points. Uh, first of all, I turned my uh microphone and camera off because uh Greg Mattson, our attorney, made the mistake a few years ago of giving me his cell phone number. Uh, and so I did call him uh while I stepped away. Uh legally, uh, there is no conflict of interest. So Pam can certainly uh vote on a motion uh in this regard. Um, you know, obviously, anyone can always recuse themselves or abstain, you know, whatever the case might be, but legally, there's no conflict of interest. Uh, second, I just want to reemphasize what Shonda said earlier. Um, I have no doubt that it was appropriate to quarantine the players. You know, physical contact uh during the game, there were multiple players from the opposing team that ended up with COVID, uh, no doubt uh that they should be quarantined. Uh, and then finally, uh, there is a difference between uh this team and uh another team that we had to quarantine uh earlier in the year. Uh, because the other team that quarantined had a player on our team who tested positive. So you know, they were together for practices and games. Uh, whereas, you know, the girls hockey team is, uh, you know, just had the the one exposure incident in the one game. So those are just the three points and I'll turn off my mic.
Uh, Jennifer and then Nikki.
Thank you, Pam. Um, first of all, I just want to say that I feel awful for these girls. Um, as I do for all of the seniors that have gone through something similar and those that went through it last year. Um, we, we are looking out for your best interest and um in addition to the rest of the kids in the school um and in our district. Um, I thank you, Shonda, for all of that information and thank you for all of the work that you do. Um, I think it is critical that we listen to our COVID team. Um, their job is to keep our students and staff safe. We have them there for a purpose. Um, if our COVID response team is saying that this is not the time to change this, these standards, then we as a board need to go with that. We don't know everything that Shonda and her team knows. We need to listen to her and to the rest of that team in this situation. Um, I would, I, I wish we could change it. Like I said, I feel horrible for these girls. I know some of these girls. Um, I, you know, I feel horrible for, we had a situation with the fall play where we had a student who was supposed to be in it and couldn't um for the final performance. We have had these situations um since last March, and it is truly unfortunate. But when we are bringing our students back into the building in a situation where they no longer have the six foot distancing, where we cannot guarantee that we are doing absolutely everything we can, then we need to do everything we can. We need to make sure that these standards are still there. We owe that to all of our students and to all of our staff. Um, and that includes the hockey team, that includes any other students that might encounter um this sort of thing due to quarantine. And a lot of them already have and most likely many more will, but we are keeping them safe too. Um, and we are thinking about their needs. So um, I, I understand the concern that we need to look out for students, but that means all students, that means those students that aren't in those activities, the student that's next to them um in class, we need to consider all of that. So, um, Shonda, thank you for all of that information.
Um, I just want to point out here quickly, um, I talked to Joni tonight, she's our uh district nurse. Um, and they are going to be quarantining thirteen to fourteen um junior high hockey kids um starting today because they had an exposure. So I figured since we're already here, I can let you know that that's gonna happen. Um, based on how this meeting goes, whether we do the fourteen or the ten day, we just don't know. So, uh, just FYI.
And I think it's really important here to make sure that we understand that this isn't like a written in stone thing. I think it's a case by case basis. You can always say, you know what, this situation doesn't call for fourteen days. It, let me take a look and see. I think every case should be looked at individually. We owe that to our kids to look at every single case individually. And nobody wants our kids to come into school and spread COVID around. Nobody does. We want to be as carefully um and as safely as we can. But I, again, I think that we need to look at it by a case by case basis, not having just a blanket ten day or a blanket fourteen day end of story. Um, because there are so, and again, there are so many issues that will come up um that we can't even think about. Um, for every single kid, every single kid in our district, there might be um a a child who practices, like you said, getting ready for this, the play. And they're all ready for the play and they can, they can be in it tomorrow, but not tonight. Um, and and I see what Arlen is saying too, like that somebody had to come up with that arbitrary day. Um, and that's why I think that we need some flexibility here. I think we owe it to our kids. Yes, I am passionate about this. No kid should have to find out that their hu- hockey career ended on a Zoom call at a kitchen table. If five hours early later she could play, she can play at twelve oh one on Wednesday, but she can't play at seven PM on Tuesday. We need to think about what's best for kids. The mental health is important. If we are saying that we care about the kids' mental health, those five hours matter. Five hours matter. Four days matters. I'm not asking you to change a blanket statement to say fourteen to ten days, I'm asking for flexibility. Nikki and then Holly.
Shonda, a quick question before I respond. Um, did that just come in while we were having the meeting? This new information from Joni or was that like yesterday or?
Nope, uh, about twenty minutes before we got out of the meeting.
Oh, okay. So, okay, great. Thank you for all that information as well.
Uh, can I just hop in quick? Um, if you decide to do the shortened corney quarantining, who are you gonna have make those decisions, whether it's appropriate to do a ten day or or a fourteen day? I just, if that's the decision, when it go, just figure out who you want to make that decision.
I believe that's um a question to be answered by the superintendent.
I think it's uh all gonna come down to uh what the motion is. Uh, and you know, if it passes, uh, you know, and uh if it was up to me, I, we gotta stick with the fourteen day standard quarantine as sort of the base. Uh, but then if there's uh a requested change, I think we would require a negative PCR test if it was taken on day five or later. Uh, and then I'd want everything reviewed by the COVID team, uh, and then I could sign off on it. You know, because other other restrictions would need to be, you know, followed through MDH and that, that's definitely the COVID teams. Um, you know, skill set and, you know, they'd have to be part of it.
Holly.
Thank you. Um.
Um, I didn't get a chance to finish what I was saying, I just asked a question.
I'm so sorry.
Sorry. Okay, I have a really big problem. Everybody says that we speak on behalf of all kids. But we don't, because if that was the case, then I wouldn't be on this board today. When I met with the Hispanic community, I was the first board member in recorded history to ever reach out to them. So to sit there and say that we speak on behalf of all children and family, no. This is solely for the hockey team right now.
Holly.
Um, two things. One, I don't have the district's attorney at my disposal. So when I try to get clarification around situations, I call MSBA. And MSBA did tell me that the situation that we are presented with right now is a conflict of interest. So I don't know what that means, but I did explain the situation the best I knew and who was involved and how we're involved. And they clearly stated to me that it was a conflict of interest. And again, I don't get the disposal of the attorney for the district on speed dial. And maybe we should be discussing that later on about how we access the attorney and what that looks like. Because it sounds like to me we're going to be having more issues coming up about the attorney says. I'm not saying he's wrong. But what I'm saying is it's it's pretty complicated. And so I'm just putting that out there that I was told that directly because that's my source. And one more thing. The motions that we have or the the recommendations that we have, if one is presented, can we run through all of them until we come to an agreement? Or how does that work? Is it just one and done? So whoever makes the first motion, it's one and done? That's the point of order I need.
Yeah, and if I could, uh, first of all, the Minnesota School Board Association gives really good advice. So no doubt about it. I refer to them, you know, a lot. Um, and uh, you know, but so does our school attorney. Uh, you know, I've worked with Greg for uh a decade or even more. I've worked with a law firm for for longer. Uh, you know, really top notch firm. And, you know, I trust, I trust his advice and, you know, obviously, he's more accessible uh uh during non duty or during non work time, you know, than 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 somebody at the MSBA might be. So um, you know, I rely heavily on Greg and I haven't had bad advice from him. Um, now, at the same time, I'm calling him at must have been around seven o'clock. You know, I have no idea where he was, I don't know if he had access. Well, I'm sure he didn't have time to look at, you know, case law or anything like that. Uh, but that, that's what he told me, is that legally, there's no conflict of interest.
Jennifer.
And then my, my point of order on the, on the recommendations, really quick.
I'm sorry, Holly. Uh, I forgot about that. Yeah, really, um, you know, any board member can, can make any motion. Uh, and then, of course, we seconded it and uh, uh, there can be amendments to that motion. Uh, if a motion fails, uh, then anybody else can, can jump in and make another motion. Uh, even if if the first motion passes, you know, there could be maybe a clarifying motion or an additional motion made. Uh, so it's definitely not one and done. Um, you know, and, you know, we want to make sure we get it right, that everyone's heard and that everyone has a a chance to 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 make a motion and and move on.
Um, I really do want to support what Nikki is saying in terms of the we and the all and all kids. She's correct. We have not taken the interest of all people in our district and all kids in our district to account every time we make a decision. And I do want to honor what Nikki has said and I want to support it and I want to learn what I need to do differently to make sure that all kids are included in decisions and what is in the best interest for the community and for all kids. So thank you, Nikki, for bringing that up. I do support that.
As do I, Holly, and I, I think it's, if this is all a matter of timing, if this was a group of kindergartners or if this was a group um of seniors who couldn't go to prom or couldn't attend their graduation, or if this was a baseball team um and a pitcher couldn't pitch their last game, if this was a third grader who the biggest thing in their life right now is is making and shooting off a rocket. Um, what I'm saying is every kid, every case, every kid who comes up, we need to be flexible for that kid. I'm not saying it's the only reason it's hockey right now is because this is the first time that we've had to to, that we've really been forced to take a look at it. As a parent living out these four days, I've realized how crucial they are, how important they are to kids. It's gonna be important to that kindergartner, regardless of what color their skin is. Every kindergartner loves the last day of school. I don't care what color their skin is. I, if if that's the biggest thing in their world right now is to eh, to end with their kindergarten teacher, I want them to have that opportunity. If it's thirteen hours or thirteen days and nineteen hours, you know, it, what, what difference does five hours make? It makes a huge amount of difference to that kid. It makes a huge amount of difference. Like if if tomorrow was the last baseball game of the season and my senior is pitching in his very last game, those five hours matter between him sitting at home or being on the mound with his teammates. So it doesn't matter what color skin, what special ed or regular ed, this is a policy for every single kid in our district. It's all I'm asking for is some flexibility to look at every single situation and have somebody make a determination instead of just saying, nope, blanket fourteen days, I don't want to discuss it. I think we owe it to our kids.
I, I completely hear you. And I know you've mentioned pitching a couple times. I often know that if I had gotten onto the school board when my child was in school, I probably, me personally, Holly, wouldn't have been able to be objective. I, you know, I, what I think should have happened for him or what I wanted to happen for him might not have been what was best for all kids. And when I go back into that thought, sports is an option, it is not school. And we all knew going into sports, there was going to be consequences if an infection came up. And so it's not like, well, the infection came up, now let's change the rules or the ban con, you know. That's why we have policies and parameters in place. I don't know if the fourteen days is arbitrary, I really don't. But it seems like there's some science backing it, if that's the way the world has gone. So they could have said sixteen, they could have said twelve, but the science has pushed us at fourteen. So I do empathize with you. If, if it was a pitching situation, my head would be under the pillow and I'd be bawling. But I don't know if that would be the best for all kids. I don't. So that's all I'm saying about that.
Well, and you bring up the science. So, you know, I think we, you know, and and I think we're getting in the weeds here. I mean, this is it, this is something that maybe the COVID team and I mean, this is, this is something that maybe the COVID team and the superintendent need to think about instead of the school board being in, in the weeds here. But we are, and we're going to continue this until it's over. But, you know, if you look at the science, there's no reason that the Minnesota Department of Health updated their, their own policies on February 19th because they know the science behind that says, you know what, maybe we don't have to quarantine for, you know, the full 14. We're going to give you some parameters. It says right here in black and white that we don't have to quarantine for 14 days because we know that, you know, they're not going to put out a recommendation that's not science based from the Minnesota Department of Health and this, in the Center of Disease Control. That's where our COVID team is taking their information from. So, you know, it's right here in the sports quarantine clarification. You know, shortened quarantine may be considered. And so, you know, we're looking at 13 days. And you're right, you're right. It is hard to stay objective. You're right. It is. But again, the reason this has come up is because I'm living this policy out. And I just want what's best for kids. I want what's best for kids. I know we all want what's best for kids. And I'm just arguing that flexibility in this case or in any other case, I think the hockey team has heightened or brought to the table for me the importance of flexibility. And whether this came up because of basketball or, you're right, sports is a choice, but this is also affecting kids in the classroom. What about the kids who need to take an ACT test and they've got high anxiety? And would do much better to take a test in person. But tomorrow they could, but today they can't take that test in person. You know, ACT scores have high implications for kids. You know, lots is at stake there. What about the MCAs, you know? What about the, the AP chemistry final? What about, you know, the, the concert that's important for somebody? I mean, there's so many cases or scenarios that might come up that I feel like we can't have a blanket statement saying, no, sorry, I, no. I'm just asking for flexibility. That's in, and I think that we owe it to our kids. And Nikki, when you type something in the, the chat box, nobody else can see that except us. And so we don't like to have ongoing conversations or comments in there. But the chat box is simply meant to be for a tool to know who's needing to speak next. You had written, you should care about the color of people's skin. For me, it's who I am as a Dakota woman. What I meant by I don't care about the color of people's skin is it doesn't matter to me. I look at people the same. I care about people the same. This issue is an issue for every single kid. I, I didn't mean that I didn't care about it. What I meant is it doesn't matter to me. That's not the defining point here. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think Jennifer's in the queue and then Brecken.
I apologize. I needed to plug my computer in. I just wanted to comment. Pam, you had mentioned that you're living this policy right now. And I just wanted to say that many families have lived this policy in the last year. And it's a difficult policy to have to follow. There's no doubt about that. It's, it's awful and it's heartbreaking for many. And I am definitely not against looking at this in the future. I think right now, when we are bringing our kids back to school, there are too many unknowns. And so that's my concern, that right now, making this decision tonight to change the quarantine time, timeline just doesn't seem right, especially when we're given the advice of our COVID team to not do it. But I think in April, after we have the kids back in school for a couple of weeks and weeks, and we can get an idea about what that's going to look like, then it makes sense to revisit this. And yeah, hopefully be able to make some decisions that can shorten the quarantine time at that point.
Brecken.
Okay, yeah, thank you. You know, this is definitely a really interesting conversation to have. And I'm going to be honest, I'm happy that I personally don't have to have a voting say on this because it is a really difficult decision. And so I know that you guys are definitely in a bind. I agree though with Jennifer in the sense that if, if we weren't about to transition with having all of our students back in school, I would say, yeah, then maybe, maybe, maybe this would be a good time to make the decision. But as a student who's going to be in school with the full student body there, where social distancing isn't going to be available for six feet and it's going to be three feet, this decision does affect me personally and affects all these other students that aren't on the hockey team. You know, and so I have friends who are on the hockey team and I feel horrible for them. And I know personally what it's like to have someone you're really passionate about cut short. I mean, for me, my Yig experience ended on a Zoom call in, in my parents' car. Like that was my end of the season for Yig, my whole high school experience. And that sucked. It really did. Nobody wants to end this thing they've worked for, for four years and beyond on a Zoom call. And that's really difficult. But with that being said, we have to respect the fact that, that we are in a difficult, difficult situation with COVID. And we have to respect the fact that a lot of students aren't vaccinated yet. A lot of kids, they aren't vaccinated yet. And yes, our teachers are getting vaccinated yet, but so far vaccines have not trickled down to students and younger people. So to be honest, I don't really know what the best move here is. But I think it would be wise to maybe hold off a little bit. And then definitely, once we have students come back and see how that's going, if there's more transitions through school, then yeah, I think we should look at it on a, on a case by case basis. But I don't know. I think it, it, it does affect every single student in the school district on this decision. And I just have a quick question. Was this conversation being held before this incident arose with the hockey team? Or is this just being brought up because, or is this just something that's being discussed now with the recent events, the hockey team exposure?
You know, perhaps I can answer that, Brecken. That's a great question. I know that, of course, we've been talking about quarantine standards all year. And then there's a really good presentation that Shonda presented on January 7th. You know, there may have been some incidental conversations over the past couple of months, but certainly not a discussion like this administratively or at the board level.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, I don't really know what the best option is here. I think that all points are valid, but I think that you can't ignore a global pandemic that shut down our world for a year now. I mean, if you look at it, the US, we're still world leaders in COVID cases. And that's kind of hard to ignore. So I don't know. Like I said, I'm really grateful that I'm personally not voting on this. You guys definitely have your work cut out for you. That's all for me.
Anna.
Thank you. So I will make a motion to continue to use the 14 day quarantine standard for students to be revisited by the board in April.
I, Nikki Buck, second that. Any other discussion? Shonda, you're in the queue.
Oh, I, I just wanted to point out that I, I am a team of three. And so they've been telling me, make sure you say this, make sure you say this. So the quarantine was shortened from 14 to seven day because people weren't complying with the 14 day. It wasn't because science said you're not as infectious from this day to this day. And so that's why they put the stipulations in, like if you want to short quarantine, you must wear a mask, you must social distance, and you must wash your hands. So they just wanted me to clarify, clarify that, so.
And I don't know if it's been said, but the shortened quarantine time, I think it has been said, but I think it's really important to talk about that they have to have a negative COVID test to come back. We're not asking anybody to come back who doesn't provide proof of a negative COVID test.
But you can also have a negative COVID test on day eight and a positive COVID test on day 12 or 14.
Yep. Surely you can. All right. So the, the, I think you did number one, Anna, is that right? I move to continue to use the 14 day quarantine standard for students until April 5th or 19th, when the full board will revisit the standard.
Oh, if I could jump in, I think, you know, we've had multiple meetings, of course, when this is planned to discuss. And so I think Anna and Nikki presented the original recommendation, probably that was posted for the special meeting. So I believe they said in April. Certainly, you know, there could be a friendly amendment or an amendment to actually select the specific board date. Otherwise, we might be revisiting this on multiple occasions. But right now, the official motion does say in April.
Yeah, I did just say April to leave it open, honestly. I would be okay with us talking about it both on the 5th and the 19th. I think, you know, as more information is available, it's always appropriate to revisit stuff. With COVID, things change. Maybe new information will come out between now and the 5th. Maybe there won't. You know, so I think it's fine for us to revisit it multiple times. And that's why I just left it open and just said April.
Thank you, Anna.
All right. So I move to continue the use of 14 day quarantine standard for students. When the full board.
To be revisited, yeah, to be revisited in April.
In April, to be revisited in April, when the full board will revisit the standard. Made by Anna, seconded by Nikki. Any other discussion?
And just to clarify, I do not believe that the motion would allow any flexibility or exceptions. And again, I'm just saying that. I'm, I'm not trying to sway one or the other, but that's the intent of the motion. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, we'll begin the roll call vote with Holly Tower.
Aye.
Jennifer Tipton.
Aye.
Jim Bryant.
No.
Nikki Buck.
Aye.
Arlen Derrickx.
No.
Anna Ostendorf.
Aye.
And chair is voting no. I will not abstain. The motion fails four to three, or the motion passes, sorry, four to three. I appreciate the lively discussion and your, your viewpoints a lot. Thank you. And thank you, Shonda, for all the work that your team does. It's greatly appreciated. Is there any other topics that we need to discuss on the back to school plan?
I'll just add that I did include an updated COVID data sheet in the board packet. And just a reminder, it, it gets updated every Monday. So that's why there's always a last minute adjustment to the board packet.
All right. Then the next item on our agenda is the digital trophy case. Paul Hartman, you're here to give us an update on that.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. This is just informational only. I'm assuming you had time to read through the sheets and the presentation that I provided to you via the board packets amongst that link. I'm not sure if the link, when I make it in a Google Doc, you're able to click on certain links within that to, to peruse some of the other links that are provided to you. But this is actually was born just over a year ago, at least in my head, in talking to some districts throughout the state as well as throughout our country. This idea of how do we celebrate our, our past, our present and our future, not only from the activities angle, but really from the, the student experience angle. And I think this really has the potential to, to celebrate everything that, that Red Wing High School and Red Wing Public Schools has done through, through the use of student activities as well as the student academic and arts areas. So it's a, it's a, it's titled the Touch Wall Hall of Fame. And we won't certainly start it with the Hall of Fame, although I, I did mention in the, on the brief pack that we do have a wall of honor. But really, this is meant to be a celebration of everything that's been accomplished through the years. And if you looked, we're able to look at some of the links that were provided to you. I think this has the potential to have old videos of, of, of football games from the 1970s that the Moorhead one goes back with yearbooks going back to, to 1914. And really, it's, it's a, sort of is supposed to symbolize everything that we've accomplished as a district throughout our history. And so that it came out just over a year ago in my, in my brain. And then COVID hit and it kind of took a backseat and really generated a little bit more momentum here in the past number of weeks and months. Was spearheaded by the Dave Holber memorial and the amount of $910. And then through some recent meetings with the Booster Club, we have verbally secured a commitment from them of $15,000 to get this off and running. And hopefully on our walls at Red Wing High School come September of this year, with your approval at a, at an upcoming meeting. The Booster Club in kind has agreed to work with our departments in a fundraising effort. The actual cost is, you know, will be determined because there's lots of different avenues that we could go with this. There's different costs to it. But really, I think the other cool thing about it is it has its own unique URL, which you'll be able to access whether you are in the high school classroom or whether you're sitting on a beach in, in San Diego or you are over in Europe. You'll be able to access all the data and records of all the things that we've, we've done here in Red Wing. And I know that the Booster Club is really excited to donate to this project. I'm really excited to see this to fruition. And again, I, I know it's been a long meeting already and I don't want to take too much more of your time. You have a lengthy agenda. So at this point, I can pause. If you, if you know me at all, I can go on. So I'll pause right now and I can answer any questions. And certainly this, I view this conversation as ongoing towards, towards the next meeting.
I can just say personally, this is super exciting. I've often gone to like websites to Google stats on players that I see just doing things. And you can never find it, right? You can just never find an organized way to find somebody's stats. And I'm talking about people across the country. You know, like, how did they, so I think this is super cool. And I'm really proud of us for moving in that direction. And thank you Booster Club for boosting us.
Yep. Anna, you're in the queue. Go ahead. I don't, I see Pam's not on, so.
I just wanted to also say, you know, this seems super cool. I love this idea. And I'm wondering, I know you said that the cost is variable. I'm wondering if you have a ballpark? Like, I'm just wondering, do we expect that that 15,000 is going to mostly cover it, half cover it? I mean, like, do you have any sense of, of a ballpark? Just especially because we're also looking at budget cuts. So, you know, it's in my mind.
All right. Well, that's a great question. You know, you mentioned the word ballpark and some people here know that I have a little baseball experience. And anytime I do something, I, I like to try to hit a homerun. And so the, the cost here is, we could get sort of the bare minimum started come September, but there could be some add-ons. For example, here's, here's a scenario right now. The, the quote that was given to us is we could have a picture of every page in every yearbook going back into our history and they, they charge $75 a yearbook. So for example, if the class of 1972, I'm just throwing this out there. If they wanted to, to pay through a, you know, at a reunion or something like that to get their yearbook on there, all this stuff, it's ongoing, right? So I envision a, a big screen near the district doors. As you walk in there, similar to where the, the TV is now by the concession stand. Not that it has to be there. That's just where I see it right now. And certainly that's up for discussion. And then another screen on a, could be in the main office of Red Wing High School. Certainly, if you get two screens, it's going to cost a little bit more money. But I think, again, through all the midst of these, these tough times, I think we have a lot of people with a history of Red Wing that is, is very proud. And they've had great experiences in this community and within our schools. And I guess I'll take this time to, to say, Carson, I don't know if I can do this, but we're, we're looking for donations, you know? We don't, we want people to be able to celebrate what their sons, their daughters, their grandkids, their cousins have done in Red Wing. And not only will they be able to see it on our screens throughout the high school, but again, that's going to have its own unique URL to celebrate our history, our heritage, where we come from. So there's a lot of, lot of potential. So if you haven't realized yet, and I'm not answering your question on, on money. But you could, if we wanted to do it big and right, right away, you could take that 15 and we could add another 10 to it. And I think that would get us going. and I think that would get us going in the right direction early on.
Jim, you're in the queue, and then Nikki?
Thank you, Madam Chair, you had me, Paul, until you said, we're watching old games back in the seventies.
Recent games from the seventies, you're right, yeah.
Reality hit in a little bit here with me. I think it's a great idea, you know, we have trophy cases at the schools, probably some that, teams that I participated in back then, probably way tucked in the back and dusty and all that, but I think it's a good idea, you can actually build on that throughout the school. It's a great idea, long as you don't show old games from the seventies.
I think the other potential with this too is, you know, and every department hands out an All-Star Student Award, right? And those are on our walls in our high school, but that's where they sit. And this, we would hope to have that as part of this project as well. So it's not, it's not an activity lens that we're simply looking at this as it's everything that students have accomplished in the history of Redwing High School and going forward.
Jim, I personally am looking forward to seeing yours first uploaded there. Nikki?
Um, I would like to say I was really impressed with your creativity, Paul, when you said about the yearbook and having the graduating class have an opportunity to pay for that and put that on there. That's outreach, you know, that's not just putting everything on your guys' plate to take care of everything, everybody had a hand in, you know, in this school, so why not give them the opportunity, I really like that. So Nikki Buck would like to make a personal donation to this cause, so hit me up after this.
All right.
After this, so, thank you.
And I do have the feeling that there will be no shortage of opinions once this gets up and running in terms of what we have on there. And so I realize that we'll take some hits, but it's all, our intentions are pure, we want to be able to honor everybody that's contributed to our district.
Any other questions or comments for Paul? There is no recommendation for movement right now, it was just a presentation for information only, but any other questions? All right.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Great idea. School Board Reports is next on our agenda. Any update from the Finance Committee?
Nope, we updated last week, and we spent quite a bit of time on it, so we'll just be moving forward, waiting for admin to put together their plans.
All right, thank you. Operations?
Well, Madam Chair, we gave a report last meeting.
Okay. Personnel Committee, we also gave our update last week, but as with negotiations, we're holding off right now, we're in negotiations with the custodial group, but they would like to wait until we have some more budget projections after our budget meeting coming up next week and two weeks after that. So that's all I have. Legislative and Policy Committee, any updates there?
Yes, Madam Chair, we met tonight. We reviewed the School Board Procedures, which we had a workshop on partly here a few weeks back, and made some other suggested changes in that. Carson will be sending out the latest version of the School Board Procedures with the committee notes for input, and I believe if you got some input you'd like to have on it at that time, you can contact him, and he'll bring it to the Legislative and Policy Committee the next time we meet. We also discussed non-discrimination policy and stuff, and we will try to get input from other entities on setting up using multiple initial report takers for discrimination and sexual harassment, that type of thing. And then we're looking at possibly having somebody in at least each building and representing different ethnic groups or whatever, but we're looking for, we had, Anna mentioned somebody from another entity that has some reporting methods that they use and stuff, and so we'll be following up on that again also at our next meeting, and then we'll continue on to, trying to think, we didn't really get to it, administrators, administration procedures, I guess it is, so, I think that covers most of it.
We just lost Jennifer.
She had a prior commitment, so she will be gone for the rest of the evening, so note taker, please note that she left at eight thirty-six, thanks. Any other School Board Reports? All right, anything else, seeing none, then Administrative Reports?
You know, I do have a written report, the only item that's new has to do with just a description of some of the costs for financial services and some other positions, and so I did indicate how much we pay for business management, the, and then also the amount of pay that Kevin Johnson is earning. Actually, it's the $59,000 is pay and benefits, not just pay. And that's all I have.
Holly?
Thank you. Carson, on the achievement and, I'm sorry, Lisa, could you go down again or up again? On the Achievement and Integration Program, I was researching that, that's why I asked for a copy of what we had. It says, based on school year nineteen, or twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fall enrollment data, Redwing is considered a racially divided district? That's not a category that I found.
Yeah, and I'd have to review the email that I had, I'm not sure if that, you know, maybe I mistyped it or something like that. But we now qualify for Achievement and Integration Program because the, you know, our percentages of black, American Indian, and Hispanic kids is higher than one of our neighbors, you know, significantly higher, and so we qualify. The next step, yeah, so hopefully I didn't use wrong term.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the language and the message that sends, racially divided district.
Yeah, I'm definitely going to look that one up.
Yeah, because I think it's racially isolated, there were four categories, and I think that's what, but I'm like, did you have something else in writing? That, that's why I asked for it.
Yeah, I'll double check, yeah, we certainly want to get the right wording there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything else about Administrative Reports? All right, next on the agenda then is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to pull from the Consent Agenda? All right, seeing none, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Still moved by Anna.
Seconded by Holly.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote, starting with Jennifer Tift.
She's not here.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's been a long night. Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx.
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Ms. Tower.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so that passes six zero. Nature play area. I believe, do we have some guests that are going to be sharing? Erin, welcome, thank you for being here.
Hi, thanks, guys.
All right, so. Floor is yours.
Great, thank you. My name is Erin Augustine, and I'm the Youth and Family Program Coordinator with Redwing Community Ed. But before I held this position, I was the coordinator of Live Healthy Redwing, and this is, and that's where this project originated. Back in twenty nineteen, we were, Live Healthy Redwing was awarded grant funding from the U of M to pursue a nature play demonstration project here in Redwing to help highlight the importance of children and families spending time in nature, and how that can impact their health, and have a really big impact on both physical health and mental health. So we got those grant funds, we got a group of residents all together to talk about the importance of this and educate that group a little bit more on nature play and what nature play could be, and then to work together to design kind of a template of a possible nature play area here in town. But this project kind of grew, so we applied for additional funds and received additional funding from the United Way and the Redwing Shoe Foundation, and our ideas kind of outgrew our original format, so we had to find a new location, and the city proposed that we build this temporary nature play area by Memorial Park, but not in the park, but right next to the entrance of it, off of East Seventh Street. And then COVID hit, and we had to put the project on the back burner, like a lot of other things. And we've recently revisited this idea when Chris Palmetier and Alan Gaylor were discussing the building of a playground at Twin Bluff. So we kind of thought this would be, Twin Bluff would be a great location for this nature play park, or nature play area, excuse me. So we are proposing moving the location from the city land outside of Memorial Park to Twin Bluff School, to hopefully have this installed before the end of the school year this year even, if we can get moving on it, so that the kids have a place to play in the meantime, until a more permanent and larger playground is funded and built. So in some of the materials that should be in your packet, there's examples of local nature places, places both in Farmington and in Nurse Strand Big Woods, and I talked to the woman who helped design and build the park at Nurse Strand Big Woods, and she said it's been super successful and people really love it. So I feel like this could be a win-win for both the school district and the community. And the biggest thing I want you guys to know is that we have the funding, so the school district won't have to add any monetary funds to this project. We would just ask that the Buildings and Grounds Department would help install it, and Alan Gaylor is on board of that. And then just some yearly upkeep of it, and we have some funds set aside to do replacement stuff as well, so. That's kind of the gist of that. So I have some questions, if you'd like, and then I'm hoping that we can make, we can have a vote tonight to approve the implementation of this project, and then I can start buying stuff and finalize the plans and start moving.
This is just a clarification, this is Dawn Wetter. We do have the funding, Live Healthy Redwing was underneath community education, so that funding and the monitoring for that project is already in the district, and we've already been managing it for several years, just so everybody's aware of that.
Thank you. We have a number of people in the queue, Anna, do I have that correctly, that you're the first one there?
Yes. I just, I love this, I was part of Live Healthy Redwing, and I regret that I didn't think of this. I think it's wonderful to have this there. Anybody who doesn't know, Twin Bluff also has an outdoor classroom area, and, you know, I feel like has been a really good example of utilizing some of the natural outdoor space that we are fortunate to have around us. And so I'm just really excited that this is a possibility, and that the funding is there, you know, there needs to be some more play space at Twin Bluff. And of course, money is tight right now, so this is just wonderful, and thank you, Erin, and everybody else who had the great idea, I wish it had been mine. I'm excited to see this happen.
Nikki?
I am so excited to hear of this happening. Nature, nature play areas are super amazing to help connect the children to earth, and it plays a mental health aspect. I manage my anxiety, my depression, my ADHD, my anger, I manage everything with earth and nature. So I'm so excited to hear about this, and like Anna said, and Erin said, and Dawn said, the cost is, you know, it's not, we're not being looked at to provide this, but yet, everybody will benefit this. This is just really exciting, thank you, Erin, for presenting this today, this gave me a big smile.
Arlen, and then Holly.
Yes, thank you. I just noted it appeared that, if I read things right, you got a grant for $25,000, and this project's $11,848. Are you looking for more projects or ideas, or?
So, so some of those funds are already spent because some of that funding did go to staff time and travel between the U of M and Redwing. And then it also went towards payments to the resident group to kind of give them another incentive to participate, so that's where those other funds went.
Thank you. I was going to give you more ideas, otherwise.
I wish we had more, but.
I also want to thank you, Erin, for bringing this to us. I know that there's been talk about it on the operations, but it's exciting to see it come to fruition. I was the first fifth grade class, I was teaching at Twin Bluff when the first fifth grade class came out there, and during that year, we decided recess was mandatory, like, fifth graders need to have recess, and so I did playground duty. I would have given anything for this to be a part of what the kids got to play with every day. It was a free-for-all out there, but if, this is just phenomenal, so I'm super excited about this. And that was ten, eleven years ago, so eleven years, but we're getting there.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I believe I'm in the queue.
You are?
Am I in the queue?
I don't see your name there.
Yep, Jim's name is next.
There you are, scroll down, Pam, Jim.
All right, we'll work on it, no, just kidding. This, as you all remember, you should remember, we talked about it last Monday at the board meeting after operation, so that's a great idea. Alan has talked to, as you recall, talked to a group of people that are interested in looking at maintaining this after it's installed. So some group wants to volunteer time into the community there, and I think it's wonderful. I think like everybody, I think it'll be a no-brainer here, everybody will vote for it. And since we're doing first of, Holly was the first grade class there, what, eleven years ago? Whatever it was.
I wasn't in it, but I was a teacher.
Fifty years ago, I was the first ninth grade class out there at the middle school, so. Do you want any motion? I will move to approve the implementation of the nature play project at Twin Bluff School.
Aye, Nikki Buck, seconded.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Nikki, any other comments or discussion? All right, this time we will start the roll call vote with you, Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Mr. Derrickx?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so that passes six zero, very exciting. This is great to see, I can't wait to see it, if you need help breaking ground, give us a call.
Awesome, thank you guys so much, this has been a project that has evolved so much, I wasn't sure if it was actually going to happen, so this is really, really exciting to have a location that we know will get utilized a lot. I think this is just going to be really great, I'm so excited.
Yep, congratulations, and thank you for being with us tonight, Erin.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
All right, that brings us to upcoming meetings and future topics, those are all listed in our board packet. Just a reminder, next Monday, we will be meeting, we've decided next Monday we're starting our in-person meetings. Do you want to explain what the process is for that, Superintendent Anderson?
And really, I'd probably use the term hybrid meetings, because board members can either be in-person or virtual. We'll be meeting in Redwing High School. Charlie McLaughlin, our network specialist, bought a device that's going to be kind of in the middle of us, so that hopefully we'll catch our voices, and it will be a learning experience. You know, it's been tested, but. but we'll see what happens on, uh, board meeting night. And, um, uh, I did, uh, uh, say, uh, I am telling the presenters that they have the option, uh, as well, uh, to either be in person or, or, uh, virtual. My guess is that most will be in person, but there are some circumstances when sometimes that's not the best option for them. Uh, we are allowing public comment, again, either in person or virtual. And, uh, but nobody else is allowed, uh, to come to the meetings, uh, in person. Uh, you know, because it can be, uh, seen virtually. Uh, the reason for that, at least I'm assuming that's kind of why we headed that way, is that, um, you know, as soon as you bring in people to, to the meetings, uh, then that changes a game in terms of custodial operations, uh, use of bathrooms, um, you know, and all, all sorts of other issues. So, uh, that's where we are, uh, right now.
And next Monday is a workshop, so that'll be a good opportunity to, um, test out all of the, uh, equipment. Um, I'm assuming we'll all be bringing our own, uh, computers or devices that we need.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. Uh, we will have Chromebooks here, uh, so that you do not have to bring your own device. Uh, in some ways, that might be easier because we'll be able to hook it up to our Wi-Fi, uh, more easily. Um, however, if, if you want to bring your own device instead, you can. Uh, or what you could do is use our device for, uh, the connection, uh, to the meeting. Uh, and then your own personal advice to kind of take notes or to look at other documents or something like that. So, uh, but we will have computers here, but you can bring your own.
Um, I, I'm just gonna put it out there that I will be attending virtually. Um, I'm having nose surgery and so I'll be in a cast.
Oh.
I can't get, yeah, I can't get COVID and I can't bring my cast to the party, so.
Yeah, and that's a great example of why, uh, the hybrid makes sense. Uh, because we don't want to leave somebody out, um, you know, just because of, of, uh, personal circumstances. So I'm glad we're able to do this.
For sure. Arlen, you're in the queue and Jim?
Thank you. Um, for upcoming meetings, we had a lot of discussion tonight about open meetings, posting and what all and where and how and everything else. And I would just like to request that we have that as a topic in a future meeting and in the near future. I'm not saying the next one, but I do think it warrants a lot more discussion. Um, and, and so I'm just asking that be put on a future agenda. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, uh, undoubtedly we will. Um, what might be the best way to go is to have the policy committee at least look at a first draft. Uh, and then we can take it to the board for a more thorough discussion so we hear everyone's opinions. Uh, but I think we could streamline it by going through the policy committee first.
I guess I'm thinking it'd be more, have, better to have more board input before we get to providing a policy, but that's my idea.
I like Arlen's idea. Just to have a, just a general discussion, no, no movement. Just a general discussion with, based on what just happened.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I can do it either way, but, um, I would hate to walk into a meeting with a blank slate and then, um, you know, spend some time that, that at least we could, you know, develop beforehand. Uh, would you be open to at least me trying to identify some things, just, uh, at least topics that we could talk about or, or something like that?
I, I think you're just, uh, and I would be, be good if you put something there. I think what you really need to do is, we all need to do is identify the issues and what we all see as issues. And if you started with that, we might see other things. And then, uh, try to talk about what the possible solutions are. And, um, I would assume in the meantime, some of this stuff will already be in the works or implemented to hopefully correct this so we never have, uh, posting issues like this again.
Uh, Jim and then Anna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I think Arlen's right. You know, we don't need to beat it up for an hour and a half, half-hour discussion. We know what the issues are. We know what we're kind of looking at. Just so we have something crystal clear. I think, uh, we can look at, at our next meeting on the thirtieth, fit that into the schedule in the next few months. I think it's a warranted topic. One last thing, I, I don't, Board Member Tower mentioned tonight something on the website there. I was looking at it today and, um, and I know a lot of people, people have a lot going on. Uh, however, I was looking at the website. It says our enrollment is two thousand seven hundred eighty-one students. And we've been talking about enrollment. I don't, I don't think that's been updated since I've been on the board. But, uh, I think we're down two hundred and some students from that number. So maybe we should be having a more realistic number on our website, at least annually, I would think.
Great idea, Jim. All right, am I missing anyone else in the queue?
Just me. Um, I, so I'm just wondering some clarification about when we want to talk about these things? Because looking at the future workshop topics, um, next Monday, it looks like it's budget, which is huge, um, with personnel planning and an open enrollment survey, um, and, you know, kind of looking at our numbers. April was scheduled to be equity and online learning was tentative for May. Are we talking about switching that? Because if we're, or do you, Arlen, do you see this meeting notice falling into one of those categories? Or are you suggesting talking about it at like a regular meeting and putting it in the agenda for a regular meeting? Because if it's gonna be far enough out, we might as well, like Karsten said, do some of the legwork in the policy committee because, you know, if, if it's not gonna be a workshop topic until May, we'll have met a couple of times before then. Do you know what I mean?
I was asking to have it at a regular meeting.
Um, well, we can put it on the agenda for the fifth of April or the following.
Or perhaps, um, uh, like Jim suggested, when we meet on the thirtieth, uh, with the agenda committee, we can, um, you know, pick one of those meetings to, to discuss it at. And, you know, the three of us could certainly identify some topics, you know, that could be at least initiating the discussion. So we, we can do it. This, this shouldn't take too long, you know, so, uh, we'll, we'll make it happen.
So it sounds like we'll put it on our agenda for March thirtieth to discuss and then slide it into one of the next two school board meetings for an agenda topic.
Sounds good.
You're agreeable with that, Arlen? Okay. All right. Nikki, you're in the queue?
Um, at one of those workshops, were we gonna respond to the le, letter from the Native American Parent Committee as a group or was there just gonna be, because I thought I heard that, but then I didn't hear any mention about that in any of the workshops. So I just don't know if I'm, if I'm on the right page, maybe.
Yeah, we have a, a sixty-day window to respond, uh, to the parent committee. And so we'll do that at an upcoming, uh, regular meeting. Uh, but I want to get feedback from you, Arlen and Holly, uh, before we, uh, take it to the board. So I'm, I think we have it scheduled for April fifth, if I'm not mistaken, fifth or the nineteenth, but I thought it was the fifth.
All right, any other future topics or upcoming meetings? All right, then we'll see you next Monday, six PM at the high school. For those of you who will participate in person, otherwise we'll see you on the screen. Uh, well, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Bryant, so moved. Bryant second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? I didn't.
Holly, Jim, and then Jim, Holly, Jim, and then Jim.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start the roll call vote for adjourning, uh, with Nikki Buck.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Ostendorf?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. We are adjourned at nine PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.